There she is. All right. We are going to start the meeting now. We have everyone, two, three, or five. All right. Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you all to the meeting. Today is Tuesday, March ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. And it is seven oh three P M. Call the roll, please.
Okay, sorry. Mayor James.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salvino.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Yeah.
Commissioner Llewellyn.
Yeah.
Commissioner Adman.
Yeah.
City Manager Garcia.
Here.
Tony Ansborough.
Here.
Can you please close your eyes for a moment of silence? Thank you. And can you please stand for the flash? I pledge allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America.
And with the Republic
of which is saying
one nation
under God indivisible liberty and justice for all.
All right. The first introduction or presentation we are going to have is the introduction of school board member Sarah Leonardo. Leonardo. She on?
Hi, everyone. Sorry, I was muted. Um, thank you so much for having me tonight. I am Sarah Leonardi. I'm a teacher and the school board member for District Three, of which part of Dania sits in. And I just wanted to formally introduce myself to Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, and the city of Dania. And I'm really looking forward to working with you all on our schools, our public schools. Some priorities of mine transparency and accessibility, improving our facilities that have obviously been in the news a lot, and improving mental health services. I feel very strongly about working with the municipalities and building a stronger, better dialogue with with our cities. So I really look forward to working with you in that. And my phone number, my cellphone number is nine five four four one two nine one eight eight. And you can email me at sarah dot leonardi at browardschools dot com. That's all also on the Broward Schools website. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Sarah. Um, what schools are you responsible for in your district? Hold on, let's. Are you?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so I have about thirty schools. The majority are elementary schools. There are three middle schools.
Dania.
Yeah, so I don't have any Dania schools. Um, but there are part of Dania is in District Three. So part of the people who live in my district in District Three, who live in Dania, go to schools that are not in District Three, if that makes sense. But the the part of Dania that's in District Three is north of Sterling. So it's a small portion, but I just, I wanted to make myself available to you. And I have actually advocated a lot for Dania Elementary. And we had a recent workshop on that, on improving the, one of the the buildings there. So even though it's not in my district specifically, I advocate for all schools.
Thank you. That is awesome to hear because I know that a lot of you all are advocates for a lot of other areas, despite what district you serve, and that is a very thankless job. So thank you, thank you, thank you for for your service and coming to introduce yourself to us all. Not all of our constituents have your number. If they have any questions that I'd like to add. Does anyone want to add anything? Cool. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now we'll have a presentation on the city website improvements by our Director of Finance, Frank. Sure he knows how to turn this up on.
Oh, there you go.
Hello, hello. Okay, so I'm actually working two computers right now. I'm trying to make this thing make sense. Um, all right. So thank you very much for for recognizing me and just want to give you a quick update. The city's website has been hosted by Civic Plus, which is a partner of the city. They've been a faithful partner of the city for quite a long time. We also use their their agenda program. And what what we're at the point now where the website is really, it it looks okay, but it's not very user friendly. It's not easy to find stuff. And since we use Civic Plus and they have a ton of municipal customers across the United States, these systems, they all kind of look the same. They have a very similar looking feel. The platform is kind of universal, so it's easy for all cities to just use and all the modules are the same. And it's really difficult to have a city stand out using this template. So I was asked to look into this and see what we can do about retooling our website. And I met with our our Public Information Officer, the I T Department, our Procurement Administrator. And we discussed that we could go out in the future and issue a request for qualifications for website redesign, hosting, ongoing maintenance services. And again, our current provider, they are welcome to submit a proposal. They do have a new template that they use. It's supposed to be more enhanced and modern look, but what I've heard from our P I O is that it's really just the same nuts and bolts underneath, and when it's really not going to serve us as well. But they are welcome to to respond to that in the future. So as I mentioned, our website is not very intuitive, not easy to find information. It's going to have to be overhauled. And what we're looking at is is kind of two prongs of this website would be one side of it being the public facing, the the, you know, selling the city as a destination for those who want to live, work, and visit the city for its amenities, and showcase really all that Dania Beach has to offer. And the other side of it is going to be providing the typical information that a municipal service provider would provide to the public. So I mean, all that stuff has to be there, but through this process, we will clean up all of our webpages. We would streamline the language and make it much more user friendly, and just remove anything that's sort of antiquated or doesn't even be there anymore. So what we're recommending is that we put this website project in the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year budget, along with the necessary funding. We'll put it in as a as a capital request for this coming budget year. And and we hope you would support that. Separate from the website overhaul, there's been a request from from several commissioners to have a web portal where the public can get information on current initiatives in the city, whether it be the Thousand Roommates Project, or a water line that's going to be put in. And we looked into some systems and we ended up contracting with our online budget book provider to purchase their projects in Transparency Portal. And this is going to be really nice and intuitive when we load all of our projects in there. And we put them all on a map. So there'll be a map of pins. People can click on a pin. They can see a project. They can click to get more information. They can even contact the project manager. They can request to get updates in the future on this particular project or any other ones that are on there. So this software will be ready for the public on June first, and then we'll be able to start entering our information. So we anticipate it'll be ready for public use around August first. And that's something that we're doing even separate from the website redesign. This this module can actually be bolted onto any type of website. So I'm looking forward to implementing that as well. And thank you very much for your time.
Frank, what would be the um, the cost associated with the overhaul of the website?
We did actually obtain a proposal from our current provider, and it was in the thirty-five thousand dollar price range. I think this could cost anywhere from twenty-five to seventy-five thousand dollars. We don't know offhand, but websites are very labor intensive, especially the the beginning part of it, getting everything off the ground, bringing over all of our data, creating all the new content and graphics. And again, even if we just wanted to do a redesign with our current provider, we're still spending a pretty decent amount of money toward that. So that's why we felt it'd be good to put this out to see who who's out there and who can bring something really strong to the table that's going to sell the city.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Frank. Anyone have anything else? Questions or anything to add? Seeing none. Thanks, Frank. We are going to move on to our proclamations. First proclamation, which is for World Teen Mental Awareness Day. I'm going to bring on our Parks and Recreation to have our Youth Advisory Council present that proclamation. Let's see. See Cassie. All right. Hi, good evening.
Hello.
Anthony should be reading it with the the kids. I believe he's on.
Yeah. No, they got it. They'll take care of it. They prepared for it, so we're gonna go ahead and turn it over to them.
All right, go ahead. Take us away.
Right, good evening, Vice Mayor, Mayor, and Commissioners. Here's the proclamation. The Proclamation, the Proclamation Office of the Mayor, City of Dania Beach, Florida, whereas World Teen Mental Wellness Day was founded in twenty twenty by Hollister Confidence Project to recognize and celebrate its commitment to ensuring that teens feel more confident, comfortable, and capable. Now, an annual event taking place on March second, World Teen Mental Wellness Day aims to normalize conversations and dismantle stigmas around mental health issues. And whereas World Teen Mental Wellness Day on March second is the first day dedicated to mental wellness among the teen demographic. And whereas World Teen Mental Wellness Day aims to raise greater awareness of mental health issues among teens, as well as provide education about removing stigma surrounding preventative mental health, mental health, and whereas according to the American Psychological Association, Gen Z has the worst mental health of any generation, struggling with issues such as loneliness, anxiety, and depression. However, teens are dedicated to making a difference. According to Lifeblood, sixty-four percent of Gen Z say they want to achieve a healthier lifestyle, overall happiness, including a stronger self-care routine. Also, ninety-four percent consider mental health very important to their well-being. And whereas teens around the world are encouraged to use March second as an opportunity to practice self-care and silence themselves down, whether that's through exercising, meditating, listening to music, and more. Online, teens can demonstrate how they recharge on Instagram and Twitter with hashtag World Teen Mental Wellness Day. Now, therefore, on behalf of the Dania Beach City Commission, I, Kanaya Anderson, and I, Cala Holm, Youth Advisory Council members of Dania, from the City of Dania Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim March second, twenty twenty-one, as World Teen Mental Wellness Day, in the City of Dania Beach, and call upon our residents to show their support for our teens to learn.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Eric, and Cassie, and and the youth, and T J, and everyone who who continues to work with our youth. I am so excited with what you all are doing. And I'm so proud of you, young ladies. Keep leading. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to go to Women's History Month, that proclamation.
A proclamation from the Office of the Mayor, City of Dania Beach, Florida, whereas each year Women's History Month offers an important opportunity for us to shine a light on the extraordinary legacy trailblazing American women and girls who have built, shaped, and improved upon our nation. And whereas American women have led movements for social and economic justice, made groundbreaking scientific discoveries, enriched our culture with stunning works of art and literature, and charted bold directions in our foreign policy. American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas women influential in Dania Beach's history, such as E. Vera Hill, the first female elected to the Dania Beach City Commission, and the first female mayor appointed by the commission, Leola Collins, a community educator with Collins Elementary, being named after her, Mildred Jones, a community activist, Rose Lazana, publisher of the Dania Beach Press, Bobby H. Grace, the first African-American female mayor elected in Dania Beach, Anna M. Garcia, the first female city manager of the City of Dania Beach, and Tamara James, the youngest female mayor of the City of Dania Beach, are just a few of the great women who helped change and shape the landscape of this great city. And whereas during Women's History Month, let us honor the accomplished and visionary women who have helped build our country, including those whose contributions have not been adequately recognized and celebrated. And let us pay tributes to the trailblazers from the recent and distant past for daring to envision a future for which no past precedent existed, and for building a nation of endless possibilities for all of its women and girls. And whereas this year's theme, Valiant Women of the Vote, Refusing to be Silent, honors the brave women who fought to win suffrage rights for women, and the women who continue to fight for the voting rights of others. Now, therefore, on behalf of the Dania Beach City Commission, I, Tamara James, Mayor of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, here do by proclaim March two thousand and twenty-one as Women's History Month, and encourage our residents of Dania Beach to recognize and celebrate in many ways that women's history has become woven into the fabric of our nation's story. I will read the next one, which a lot of cities have adopted, and I've received this from several cities. So they ask that Dania Beach join in in this COVID nineteen Memorial Day. So this COVID nineteen Memorial Day would be an annual Memorial Day from here. And it reads, proclamation from the Office of the Mayor, City of Dania Beach, Florida, whereas the first Monday in March has been designated as COVID nineteen Victims and Survivors Memorial Day. And whereas COVID nineteen is an illness caused by a virus that can transmit from person to person and has spread across the world, creating a global pandemic that is having catastrophic effects on human life, our community, and our economy. And whereas local and state governments, health departments, and public servants have taken bold actions to protect residents, support struggling economies, and find innovative ways to provide services. And whereas in response to rapid spread of COVID nineteen and stay-at-home orders, essential workers have stepped up to provide critical services to protect our communities and save lives, sacrificing their own health and safety. And whereas COVID nineteen, excuse me, has had a disproportionate impact on low-income communities and communities of color, exacerbating inequalities already prevalent in our systems that we must address as a nation. And whereas public health guidance and policies targeted at prevention, such as social distancing, wearing masks in public, and staying at home to help mitigate the spread of COVID nineteen, prevent illnesses, and lessen the burden on individuals and society. And whereas the symptoms of COVID and severity of COVID nineteen can vary well dramatically by individual and the long-term health implications for survivors, it's largely unknown. Has many survivors suffered with lingering side effects of the disease, long have they no longer test positive? And whereas more than two point five five million people worldwide and five hundred and sixteen thousand in the United States has lost their lives due to COVID nineteen. And in Dania Beach alone, more than one thousand four hundred and seven have tested positive for this deadly virus. And whereas each life lost to COVID matter and leaves a hole in the hearts of loved ones, family members, and surrounding community. Now, therefore, on behalf of the Dania Beach City Commission, I, Tamara James, Mayor of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim that Dania Beach supports the designation of the first Monday in March as COVID nineteen Memorial Day in remembrance of those who have lost their lives, and in honor of those who are forever marked by COVID and continue to suffer for the impact, from the impact of this virus. Okay. So we're going to move on to citizens' comments. I did not receive any citizens' comment submission forms, but there, if there is anyone that is on the call that would like to address the commission, if you use your raise a hand tool to be recognized, you have three minutes to speak. It's about ten seconds.
All right, Sarah. Let's hold, hold on one second. Are you unmuted?
Yes, hi, how are you?
I'm well. Write your name and address for the record. You have
My name is Sarah Leftov, and I reside at fifty-nine sixty Southwest Thirty-Seven Terrace, Fort Lauderdale, or Dania Beach, Florida, three-three-three-one-two. Um, Ms. Tamara Mayor James and Vice Mayor Marco Salvino, and Commissioner Joyce Davis, and Commissioner the amazing Lauren Adman, and Lori Ms. Llewellyn, and Public Works, and everyone who stood behind Ms. Anna Garcia, and Manager Candido, and the Director, Mr. Fernando, Richard Rodriguez, and so on and so forth. I just wanted to basically say thank you. Thank you for allowing Thirty-Seven Terrace to have a dream. Thank you so much. You have no idea what this has done to my personal family. Having my child be able to soon be able to walk out of her home and not have to walk in eight inches of water, not having to be glued to the weather app, or having to constantly try to turn myself into a meteorologist, trying to find out how much percentage of rain is going to fall, and how much of an ocean I'm going to have outside my door. The no words can express how grateful and thankful I am. I know many of you has received so many emails in the past two years. And I I have tried very hard, you know, for four and a half years since I moved out here from New York to achieve this goal. And I'm just a small, simple person. And without this team, this commissioner body, and so many other people, this would have never happened. And I am so grateful for for everything. And last but not least, I think I spoke to him more than I ever spoke to my husband in a year's worth, as him being a doctor. Mr. Dencer, the amazing Mr. Dencer. This person has a the best heart in the world. He's come and met with me here in Sterling Oaks Estate. I don't know how many times. I don't know how many times he's taken my calls. I've been in constant contact and following up on the whole C C N A. Has this been approved? Has that been approved? What are we going into design? I am so excited for this, and I can't wait for that light at the end of the tunnel where this is gonna, you have no idea. Maybe for you, it's just a dream. For for me, I've been battling this for close to almost five years, and I am just so thankful and grateful. Thank you.
I was gonna let you run well over your time. There is not a lot of times where we we get residents that come back and and thank us. And so you are very well appreciated. Comments, your remarks. It feels good to to help residents. That's what we always
Tamara James, you have helped me not just with this, but if it wasn't with the first hurricane Irma that I ever went through. And if it wasn't for you constantly texting and Ms. Llewellyn as well, I don't know if she recalls back and forth about, you know, we kept kosher food and how are we going to, you know, I I will never forget, you know, I never forget. I mean, I'm just I'm new, still considered new here to Florida, even after four and a half years. And I and I'm forever grateful. I've never experienced a hurricane, or nevertheless, having thirteen days of no power, actually fainting. My husband actually had to revive me. I mean, it was atrocious for me, this very first hurricane of my life, but um, I'm very grateful that we have such a strong body, such a, so many people whose I have no words. I really don't know how to express myself. I didn't write this out. This is completely from my heart. I mean, there's, you guys are just like amazing. You stand behind everything you state, and you follow through. And I just, I I'm so grateful.
You're family now. You don't have to keep saying you're the new kid on the block. You're family. And we're gonna all have a Shabbat dinner one, one, one day at your house. So thank you again, Sarah. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Any other public comments? Citizen comments? Seeing though there are none. We're gonna go to public safety reports. Captain Marks, are you there? There you go. Good evening.
Okay. All right, I'm unmuted now. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I just wanted to start by thanking everybody for coming out to our ribbon cutting at the Dania Point Substation yesterday. That was great to see everybody in person and have a safe little event there. So thank, thank you once again. Since the last commission meeting, we responded to the following crimes. One aggravated assault, five auto thefts, one buried building or structure, one burglary business, ten burglary conveyances for mostly unlocked vehicles, sixteen thefts, and four shoplifting calls. Within the past two weeks, a decrease of four burglary businesses compared to the two weeks prior, and a decrease of two robberies as compared to the two weeks prior. We also made thirty-four arrests since the last commission meeting, several being from the crimes just listed up above. Since the last commission meeting, our crime suppression team, we received a couple complaints, one of which was a subject loitering and littering at Griffin Park. During the investigation, the subject was contacted and found to have outstanding warrants for his arrest. The subject was arrested and trespassed from the park. We received another complaint in reference to an increase in criminal activity in Malaluka. Our CSP responded to the concerns and contacted a subject loitering in the area who had a warrant for fraudulent use of a name and lengthy history of auto theft, burglary, and armed robbery. The subject was also found to be in possession of large amounts of narcotics. Our Criminal Investigation Unit has been busy the last two weeks. We had a arrest for vehicle theft. Deputies responded and conducted a traffic stop on a golf cart which was determined to be stolen the same night. The subject was arrested and found to be in possession of several other golf carts. It should be noted that this subject is suspected of being connected to the recent spiking golf carts being stolen in Dania Beach. The investigation is ongoing. An interesting little tidbit was when he bonded out of jail the next day, he went to the tow yard to recover his vehicle, which we had already conducted a search for and on. And as he was leaving the tow yard, he T-boned another vehicle, and we arrested him again for driving under the influence. We had a fraud arrest where a subject used the victim's credit card information to make payments. The subject was subsequently arrested on a warrant. We had a grand theft arrest where a subject was in possession of twenty thousand dollars worth of fishing equipment stolen out of the city of Stewart. The subject was arrested for grand theft, resisting without violence, and a warrant for robbery. Our motor, motor unit and commercial vehicle enforcement unit received a complaint of dump truck speeding, disobeying the stop sign, and dropping their rock loads on the residential streets in the area of Forty-Second Avenue. Our traffic unit spoke with three households on Forty-Second Ave. We spent two and a half hours inside the F P and L plant, stopping each truck that entered. We advised each individual driver that if the complaints continued, they would receive a citation for the offenses they were committing. By the end of the two and a half hours, word was out that our traffic unit was posted inside the gate, and the issue seemed to be less and less with each passing dump truck. We spoke with representatives from both F P and L and Allied Trucking Company. Both companies went out of their way to to help us and address the the traffic problems. It was decided that rumble strips would be installed before Tuesday of next week. The rumble strips will force the dump trucks to slow down when approaching the stop sign. Also, the two trucking companies that were observed on video speeding and showing no regard for the stop sign were contacted and instructed not to return. They were also advised that their services were no longer needed. The dump trucks will be entering through the residential area of Forty-Second Avenue for the next six to eight weeks until the job is completed. Our traffic unit will be checking periodically with the residents and representatives from both companies in order to make sure the traffic problems have been resolved. Our homeless outreach team received a complaint of a subject possibly sleeping in an abandoned vehicle on the property of the New Bethany Church, located at two oh one Southeast Fifteenth Street. Contact was made with the pastor of the church. He said that the church is helping the man. He is allowed on their property and does not want law enforcement involved. The issue was forwarded to code enforcement for follow-up. Our homeless outreach team also coordinated a meeting with the homeless outreach teams from Davy P D and Hollywood P D to address situations that border the three cities. We continued checks of sensitive areas along Dania Beach Boulevard, and the number of homeless gathering at these locations has remained low, if any at all. Our neighborhood support unit did a food giveaway on March second, twenty twenty-one, with the homeless voice of Davy and the Saint Ruth Church. We coordinated with Pastor Scott over there, and we were able to distribute two hundred and fifty boxes of of food. And it was a drive-through event. March third, we distributed another eleven food boxes to residents throughout our city. Right now, we're in the process of scheduling active killer training for Dania Beach employees and also for Humane Society employees. We continue to have two additional deputies at the beach on weekends in order to address any overcrowding. Deputies will be utilizing our bicycles, four-wheelers, and our our utility vehicle. Uh, finally, we will be having a drug takeback with Walmart and the DEA. It's gonna be on Saturday, April twenty-fourth, from ten AM to two PM at our Walmart over on Sheridan. That completes my report.
Can you, can you repeat that, April twenty-fourth?
Yes, ma'am. It's a Saturday, April twenty-fourth, from ten AM to two PM at our Walmart in Dana Beach.
Okay. Um, I do have a question. Um, it just popped into my head. Has there been any service calls for anything related to the issue that we discussed um, last meeting with the, the um, Fort Lauderdale wanted to give the stipends for that hotel over there?
We've been going there. I personally have been going there every day during the week. And I have not seen any of the uh, clientele or with the wristbands like they had before.
Okay, okay.
We'll keep doing checks and and uh, keep the mission updated.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any concerns or anything to say? All right. Thank you, Captain Marks.
Thank you.
Chief, call aside. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and our fine citizens of Dana Beach. Uh, I'd like to start off by um, congratulating Chief Marks for getting his uh, substation open um, and the city team that helped them work on that. I know that was a team effort, so congratulations. Also, on the um, historic picture I think took place yesterday with uh, all the policewomen and firewomen of uh, Dana Beach and all our city staff. That was amazing. And I was, I'm very proud to be part of that and and uh, have uh, help with that. Um, I would like to talk to you tonight basically about uh, training. Our um, firewomen and firefighters um, do a lot of training. They're required, like our officers are required two hundred and forty hours a year. Our firefighters are required two hundred and sixteen hours every year. And uh, uh, people who drive the fire trucks are required two hundred and twenty-eight hours every year. And um, just so you know, last year, we finished at ninety-two percent, which is um, very good considering it was a COVID year. Um, our men and women train on things like driver training, so they learn how to, you know, make sure they're proficient in driving the fire truck. We do uh, training in different facilities. We do a lot of hazmat training, which uh, comes in handy like uh, during the gas leak like we we had yesterday. Our officers do um, training where they simulate fires and simulate different um, different scenarios so that whenever we show up to a scenario, we're we're very uh, competent in it. We also do what's called company training. That means that we train with other crews and other stations and other cities so that everybody is efficient. And when we get on scene, um, we can work seamlessly and get the the job done. Uh, one of uh, cases was this past week, we had a car in the water and uh, we had to work with Fort Lauderdale Fire Rescue, our our BSO police officers and our fire crews. We were able to get in the water and um, basically work seamlessly. We were able to communicate without any issues. And uh, fortunately, there was no, no one found in the car. But uh, the communication and teamwork that went on that night was outstanding. You would have been proud just just to watch. And with that, I can lead into uh, in the past month, um, Station One, Station Seventeen, we ran six hundred and seven calls. Now, when you look at that, you say that's a lot of calls, but uh, Station One's running um, four hundred and fifteen of those calls. So um, Station One could still say they're number one because they're they're proud to boast that they're running the most calls. And you know, again, I just think that's um, commendable on the teams to stay in that station and and work hard uh, to protect our our citizens and um, our property here in Dana Beach. So with that, if you have any questions, so I'm here to answer.
Yes, Commissioner Llewellyn.
Hi, Chief. Um, so how many calls did you say?
Uh, between both stations, we ran six hundred and seven calls.
How about concurrent calls? I know that's always an issue.
That is, um, so yes, so you know, concurrent calls, it it is an issue because what what happens when Rescue One, Res- Rescue One or Rescue Seventeen gets a call, sixty-five percent of the time, there's a second caller comes in. So, gets a call, sixty-five percent of the time, there's another call. So then that means Rescue Seventeen has to come in. And sixty-five percent of that time of of that, we we usually get a call. So Dana is popular uh, amongst our crews for uh, knowing that when they get one call, they're gonna get three or four in a row.
So a lot of them then.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Um, Chief, I was sorry. I don't think anyone else has anything to say? All right. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Next we have the consent agenda. Do we have any calls?
Motion to pass.
Second.
All right, on favor?
Aye.
All right, public hearings, nine point one.
Nine one, in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Dana Beach, Florida, admitting chapter twenty-eight Land Development Code of the City Code of Ordinances by many part six Development Review Procedures and Requirements, Article six seven five Temporary Use and Special Event Permits, Section six seventy-five dash twenty Temporary Uses Authorized in Section six seven five dash forty Standards and Procedures for Approval of Temporary Use to Modify the Regulations for Approval of Special Event Permits. Right for severability, providing for conflicts, further providing for an effective date. Second and final reading of the ordinance presented by Community Development.
Hope you wanna say your your summary or do you?
Oh, um, I was waiting to be unmuted. Thank you. Um, this is um, second reading of this text amendment, and it is um, regarding the special events. I made a full presentation at the last meeting. Um, just to sort of recap some of the changes, we are um, eliminating a great deal of the events, special events that the City Commission will see. And we've increased the threshold for that review by the City Commission to be events that are greater than five hundred people in attendance or multi-day events. So a lot of the other, um, those smaller type events will still go through the administrative review from the multiple disciplines that look at it for compliance. Um, but it would be able to be approved administratively instead of coming before the public hearing and in front of the City Commission. Um, so those are like the major changes. We're also adding in, like the groundbreaking will be classified as a special event. But again, if it's less than five hundred people, it's something that can be approved administratively. Um, I do have the presentation ready, prepared, and ready to go through it if you'd like to see that. Otherwise, this is second reading and I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone speak for or against this?
Okay, Commissioner Mayor.
I'll second.
Follow along, please.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Llewellyn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodman.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Salvino.
Yes.
Mayor James.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Nine two, in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Dana Beach, Florida, authorizing the expenditure of city funds exceeding one million dollars for Mankin, Inc., to provide services related to city bid number twenty dash oh oh six, Southeast Second Avenue and Southeast Seventh Street Water Main Replacement Project. Running for severability, providing for conflicts, further providing for an effective date. First reading of this ordinance sponsored by Public Services.
Yes, Fernando is going to come, but uh, City Manager, is this the Southeast Drainage Project? Or is this the, is a different project? I know it says water main.
Yeah, this is a part of a of a full scope of another project that encompasses a larger area. Um, Fernando, you wanna get into the details on this?
Yes. Thank you, Manager. Oh, I was trying, I think I was on video and I got off video again. Okay, hold on.
There you go.
Everyone, Fernando Rodriguez, Public Services. This project, we discussed earlier in a previous commission meeting, I think back in October. This is going to be replacing a seventy-two, seventy-three-year-old water line that has given us a lot of problems uh, with the past couple of years with leaks and and some small breaks. And what's gonna happen is we're gonna replace almost nine thousand linear feet of a smaller pipe from eight inch to twelve inch and a more modern, sturdier pipe material. It's going to uh, basically provide that entire corridor on Second Avenue in the Southeast area, provide uh, them with a much more reliable water distribution line as well as, you know, higher quality, obviously higher quality water. And uh, it the the budget for the the project if amount uh, increase. So we have to, we have to consult you to get approval for the going over one million dollars in the project for construction.
Okay, um, I know this is then gonna be a little off topic. Where are we with the Southeast Drainage Project? I feel like that's been going on for like five.
We feel the same way. We've been really held up by the um, Second Amendment that the county had to uh, make to to be able to provide the funds for the surtax money. The Second Amendment basically changed some of the regulations in the distribution of the money to the different cities in Broward. Uh, and that is almost, has now been passed by the county. But now there is contract, um, contract arrangements after we made it to the cities, different cities that are getting the money as well as the county. We're almost finalized with that and we hope to start the sign in May, perhaps in April. We we was early, much earlier in the year, but it hasn't happened. It hasn't been our fault.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, this is a public hearing. Anyone to speak for or against this? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Lauren, we got you. Commissioner Ivan said aye. All right. Nine three, thank you, Fernando.
Items nine, nine three and nine four are for the same property. They are sought to be continued to the March twenty-three commission meeting. I'm gonna read the titles anyhow. And of course, if anybody from the public wishes to speak at this time, knowing they will not be heard tonight, they would be authorized to do that. Nine three, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dana Beach, Florida, approving a variance VA one hundred twenty, section twenty-two oh five dash ten zero of the Land Development Code, the code, to permit a building height of sixty-one point eighty-three feet, while maximum building height of thirty-five feet permitted in the IG zoning district, and approving a modification to the previously approved site plan for the construction of an approximately one hundred fifteen thousand square foot industrial building in the IG industrial zoning district under SP oh three nine dash twenty modifications submitted by US Crane and Rigging LLC on behalf of the property owner Pamela K. Hayes as trustee of the Robert L. Elmore July two thousand and ten revocable trust for the property located in twenty-nine eighty West State Road eighty-four in the city of Dana Beach, Florida, as already described in Exhibit A, conflicts, further providing for an effective date. It's a community development ordinance, uh, excuse me, resolution. I'll read the second one as a companion, but if you are people to speak, we can hear from them. Second is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dana Beach, Florida, approving a variance VA oh eight oh twenty to section two oh five dash ten D of the Land Development Code to permit a building height of sixty-four and a half feet, where maximum building height of thirty-five feet permitted in the IG zoning district, and improving the site plan SP oh seven one dash twenty for the construction of a hundred and twelve thousand nine hundred and thirty-one square foot industrial warehouse building in the IG industrial district. Provided by Dina Gray, Esquire for Greenspoon Motor LLP, on behalf of the property owner Pamela E. Hayes as trustee under trust dated September twenty-four nineteen ninety-one for the property located at three oh three five Southwest Thirty-Sixth Street in the city of Dana Beach, Florida, providing for conflicts, further providing an effective date, also the community development item.
Right, Corinne? There you go.
Aye, there we are. Um, um, thank you. So I did want to mention that these are actually two separate par- properties, two separate site plans, but both are being requested for continuance to the next meeting, which is March twenty-third.
Got it, got it. Thank you. Um, is there anyone from the public to speak for or against nine point two? I mean, nine point three, I apologize. Do we have a motion in a second?
Move to continue the item to the twenty-third.
You have a second? Favor?
Aye.
You wanna pose? All right, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on item nine point four?
Move to continue the item to the twenty-third.
All in favor?
Aye.
You wanna pose? Great. Discussion and possible action. Um, the first item that I have on here for discussion is the ceremonial policy concerning proclamations. I know this has come a couple of times for different revisions. Um, I did have a a request from Urban Outfitters that uh, wants to open up in Dana Point. And they requested that we had um, that they receive a proclamation. Not saying that the proclamation hasn't necessarily be read at the commission meetings, but uh, I was alerted that it is prohibited. Um, from what we have brought back, um, the last time we discussed this as a commission, we did not want to support giving businesses proclamations. I am bringing this back um, to our attention to see if this is something that we want to include in um, giving a business a proclamation uh, that they're opening. I think honestly that it is, it is a great idea. Um, it doesn't, like I said, it doesn't have to be on the commission, but to be able to have that a part of their ribbon cutting or just to celebrate anyone that is investing in our city as a business owner, I think are, they are deserving of at least that type of recognition. But um, it is up to the board to discuss that. Does anyone wanna speak?
I just wanna make sure that I'm clear because I don't think that I was a part of the previous discussion. So I just wanna make sure that I'm clear on what it was and then what what we're going forward with or what the request is now. So my understanding from from what you've said so far is that whenever a business opens, let's say the Chamber of Commerce or whatever, a new book business in Dana Point, at this point, the way the ordinance is now, we would not be able to recognize and um, celebrate that business with a proclamation. And now you're bringing that back to say, do we do that as a commission? Do we do that individually? How would it work now as opposed to how it worked in the past?
No, um, I'm bringing it back to say, is it something that we all want to support in allowing them to have a proclamation or not? So we, I I think that um, when we first went back and forth with the proclamation and the ceremonial items, we kinda picked someone else's template and kinda tried to add and take away from that. I don't think we had had any businesses as far as I've been elected. There hasn't been like businesses that wanted to have a proclamation on that. So that I don't think that we thought that would be an issue or not. Um, because again, I hadn't received any requests from businesses until recently, like last week. And um, so I'm bringing it back to see if that's something we wanna amend to allow us to celebrate them with a proclamation from the city.
Okay.
Um, I'll I'll give you my first gut reaction. It it seemed a little weird to me. I I don't know. Um, we we've had so many problems in the past with proclamations. And I just wanna start.
Your audio is a little messed up. Your audio is jumbled. We can't hear you like a frog.
Like a frog? Well, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I I was just gonna say, we've, uh, it seems a little weird to me. Um, but typically, um, City Manager, do other cities have proclamations for individual businesses?
If I may, through the, through the chair, Mayor?
Yes.
Well, actually, it it is customary, um, when the mayor or the city commission get a request uh, for a proclamation, eh, it it kinda brings marketing and and a celebratory type of opportunity to that business, to the commission, to the city. Um, in in my former cities, it has been done as as requested. You know, particularly there are legitimate businesses here in um, in our city. I can only see it as as a win-win um, based on my past experience.
Okay, well, I'm gonna call to my favor that people use it appropriately and um, I don't have an issue with them.
Um, Vice Mayor Avino?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, what was the reason it did not go through last time? I I may not have been there.
I don't remember it being a a big discussion of that portion of it. Again, um, there are other issues with other items and we kinda went and piggybacked off of a template from other cities and kinda just, you know. And kind of just, you know, and then when we reached one thing that was an issue, we kind of brought that back and kind of changed it, say, okay, yeah, well, second thought, we want to do that. And so this is just another one of those things that happened to come up. Um, so we're we're discussing now. I don't, I don't think there was a major discussion beforehand. I don't remember.
Did they, did they ask for the proclamation from, or did you suggest it?
No, they asked for it. They reached out.
Okay, okay, just curious. I mean, uh, uh, you know, I I I'm listening to what you're saying. I. I have an opinion that, you know, that might open a can of worms, but then I also hear the manager say that it's a good, you know, it's good for the. Uh, the city to show that we care a lot about them being here. So. Uh, it's kind of a, you know, is anybody gonna come back now if either business that are open, are we gonna have to go back to them and do proclamations? That be the only concern I have. Other than that, I'm good with whatever you guys want to do.
Okay, Commissioner Amen?
Yeah, you know, something you just said, uh, vice mayor. So that's. Could could that be one of the things we could put on there if it's requested by the business? Um, versus the commissioners being able to say, I would like to give it to um, uh, whatever. Uh, business. Can we make it something that uh, it would have to be requested by the business?
Any thoughts on that? If it really, I mean, we could put that, but if it was really a business that. Um, I I wanted to have per se, I could just go tell the business person to just go and request it. So it's not like.
I know.
I I understand what you're saying. Like I said, I haven't received. Any businesses that have been saying, you know, oh, I want a proclamation, I want a proclamation. I don't even know the individuals over at Urban Outfitters. It was just. Kind of something that that came forward. I see you, Commissioner Luellen, want to let, Commissioner, I mean, you finished?
Yes, I said something.
Okay, Commissioner Luellen?
I think it should be on a case-by-case basis. I don't think it should be something that's part of the proclamation policy itself. This is now, I think, the third or fourth exception to the proclamation policy that's been brought up, that's been in place for about a year and a half. Um, so, you know, to me, it it seems like if you're gonna have a policy, you need to follow the policy. I but I but I hate to amend it, the policy that that was in place already. Um, that we argued about sig- for a significant period of time and have. It's been brought back multiple times about amending this policy. I do not see a point in amending the policy yet, you know, amending it this time. Every time that I had asked to amend it in the past, I got turned down. Because of whatever reason, but, you know, this is the problem with having a specific policy like this. So I would rather address it on a case-by-case basis. There may be some businesses that might be more uh warrant. Warranting of a proclamation than others. And I know there are, there are things in that policy that talk about anniversaries and. Um, certain, certain things that come up that make it more reasonable for a particular proclamation to come up. I don't really have a problem per se with it with a new business that's coming into town that requests a proclamation, as long as it doesn't become a regular thing. And I think if you put it in there as being a regular thing, we could end up having a problem with it. And it could become an issue where everybody's asking for proclamation.
Okay, um, I I see you, Commissioner Davis. I just wanted to quickly respond. Before we ever had a proclamation policy, I can't recall a single business that. Were were itching to just have a proclamation for their business. It wasn't a, you know, and and at the end of the day, we don't have. That many businesses right now that is just gonna knock our door down that are watching this meeting and say, oh, guess what? They amended something. Before, a year ago, there wasn't even a policy and any any business could get it and no businesses utilized that. I don't want to just say new businesses because other businesses could be celebrating a milestone. I don't want to have to always bring back the proclamation so we can decide what business is worthy and what business isn't worthy. Typically, you know, the proclamation would be requested if it's something that I wasn't even comfortable with. I. I I wouldn't have brought it, brought it forth, but I don't want to get into debates over different businesses that come in and. You know, it becomes politicized because, oh, you like this business or you're fully able with this business and those types of things. Um, so. I'm gonna see what uh, the consensus is. Um, Commissioner Davis?
Well, I don't look at it as as whether a business is worthy or not, but I look at it as a as a matter of transparency. I would just like to know if a business is going to receive a proclamation. I can't see why anybody would have a problem with. Urban outfitters getting a proclamation, but just so that everybody knows that that's what's going on. And so as long as we know that that's what it is, then, you know, hey. Let's give Urban Outfitters a proclamation and as with any other business that would come to us. So I I really. Don't see it, you know, you know, it it being as a matter of being something worthy, more so that I see it as something being transparent, that we all know what's going on. And I I I wouldn't have a problem since there's not that many that come before us, then why shouldn't we all just be able to know? When they do come before us and say, hey, you know, let's, let's, let's clap it up. Let's go celebrate with you and give you a proclamation altogether. So. That's how I get it.
Okay, well, they could all be on the agenda. That's, that's neither here nor there. I'm not saying keep it off the agenda. They could be on the agenda, but I don't want to. Just look at it case by case and just say, okay, yes, we're going to give you it. Oh, no, we're not going to give you it. I. I would like to read it so everyone would know and and be involved in understanding if if it's a part of. Whatever ceremony they wanted to be a part of. I wanted to know if that was okay. So, um, I guess I'm asking for consensus if it's okay. To amend the problem, um, to amend the policy concerning proclamations part of the ceremonial. Items policy so that it does not have to come or well, so that it is not allowed for businesses to have a proclamation. That's my request. Okay, Commissioner Amen?
Uh, you should not willing to put in that bit about uh, as a coming as a request?
Okay, yes, we can do it. It as long as the business requests. The proclamation and it's not us dragging someone and saying, okay, because I want them to have it.
Okay, uh, then yes, I'll support that.
Um, vice mayor and Commissioner Davis?
As long as it can be transparent, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, it'll, it'll be on the uh, the agendas. Um, vice mayor? Are you muted? I can't hear you. You still muted. Hold on, let's, let me try to help you out here.
There you go. I I think, I think that uh, as long as we don't go running out and just making everything happen, but I think, I think part of your quest, we can try it out to see how it goes and. Uh, if we don't like it, we can amend it back, that's all.
All right, thank you. Um, the second item for discussion, and I don't really know who would help us facilitate this. It will be outside, but um. I guess it would have to go through the city manager and um, probably community development, but I wanted to see. If we could have some type of agency come out and really assess our neighborhoods. Um, to see how much density each part of town or different areas of our neighborhood, I mean, of our city. What it could withstand as far as when you talk about. Solid waste, when you talk about water, when you talk about um, infrastructure. I don't know if we have an assessment. I've never heard of us having one before, but it would be great in my decision-making to understand and know. What the cap of this area could take. So if a place is already um. Built out and they're trying to be be more dense, if we know that this particular area cannot handle. X amount of dwelling units in that area, I think it it would allow us to make more responsible decisions, knowing, you know. Y or A for the entire city, different portions of it. So in certain areas where people might think we're overdeveloping, we could actually say. Well, guess what? We can fit with our study X amount more units here before we are kind of capped out to where it's responsible for what our. Infrastructure can currently handle. Um, I I wanted to be able to ask, do you all think that that is something that is is necessary? Um, or because I I wanna, I wanted to have the city manager look into that. Yes, Commissioner Luellen?
Hey, isn't that something that we do now when each project comes up? They go and they look and determine what the density. What's allowed, what's what the, what the zoning says. I mean, I I'd be concerned that if you start saying that this is. Um, that we have certain caps on certain things, then you're going to be impacting zoning. Um, and you're gonna end up creating other issues and opening a whole Pandora's box of things, but maybe I'm wrong, but that's my understanding as to what happens now when they go and they look at a project. That's what's being looked at.
If I may, through the mayor?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, um, for every project, there's, there's a list and we have, we have Eleanor and we have Corinne for, for every project that comes forward. Um, commencing at every step of the way. Um, you know, finishing up with the, with the city commission approval, it goes through various process. Um, from for traffic to infrastructure, um. Everything that's encompassing within, within our zone and what is limited from height to density. Um, so that's in, that's in place right, right now.
No, I know that that part of it is in place and I know that uh, I. I know that that part is in place and and the zoning just says what's allowed. It doesn't say what is too much. It doesn't say what uh. Is, it doesn't say what is not enough. So I understand that the zoning goes to say, because the zoning easily goes and says. You know, we have projects that come before us, even the one tonight that is, you know, deferred, that says, okay, this one was zoned for thirty-four, but now they're requesting sixty-eight. But of course, that we can change the zoning to allow it. It doesn't mean that it is what's best for that area. And so I know that. Staff goes out there and you have structural, you have perm, uh, plumbing and electrical and all of these other. Different um, things that they have to go off the checklist and DRC. I I unders- I totally understand the process. But I know that other cities have and I, I cash, I forgot to write it down, but this is where I got the idea from. I know that other cities that at least have a vision or a plan to say, guess what? Well, we can accommodate more than X, Y, Z in this area. Or we can accommodate, oh, guess what? We can still accommodate more because for me, when I see that approve or proven this or proven that, we're proving this. Oh, my gosh, are we gonna have enough? Are we gonna be able to? And we don't have like a master plan that tells us. How much of each part of our city that each thing could, you know, that we could, that we can hold or facilitate. Um, vice mayor?
Uh, I don't think it'll work. I think that we're a little late on on assessment, I think. I understand what you're saying, mayor, about the uh, you know, this, about all the things that densities and so on, but. You know, your zoning codes, I mean, every time I, I mean, I sit, we sit through uh, we sit through requests of the, they always come up with the developers' code. They do. Traffic studies, they do uh, find out if we got a water pressure. I mean, they do all this stuff already. Um, prior to the job and I just can't see us uh, getting this, an assessment, spending the money on this right now with other projects we've got going on. I think that uh, pretty much, we're very, I think I understand your point about saying thirty-six years is good, seventy-two years. That would be a decision that we'd have to make at the time, but uh, the people that buy the property and then develop the property, those ordinances have already been made and put in place and. For us to tell them that we're gonna overbuild here, you really can't control a lot of it. And I just think that uh, we're spinning our wheels with that. That's my opinion.
Okay, any other comments on it?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
What, what I recommend and and the vice mayor is right, people um, own properties based on on certain property rights. What I recommend is just for for us to sit down with um, with Eleanor, with Corinne. And um, with with Richard. We we have one of the best and most seasoned. Team in in community development, including two professional, not one, but two professional city planners. Um, so we can always take a look at, at what we're doing and if there's any opportunities to elevate our our game. Um, for any concerns that may be detrimental, that's certainly something that that we can do.
Okay, I'll sit down, I'll sit down with you and and kind of iron out what I've seen other cities do to see if that was, that's something that maybe. Is being described differently than how I'm communicating it or seeing if it's something that is, you know, like a a normal or, you know, a common practice. Yes.
Okay, you know, in regards to your, uh, some of the control on the whether or not we can do the development. You know, I mentioned it many, many years ago and there was a, there was a state uh. What do they call it?
Moratorium.
Moratorium, thank you, Rick. That, you know, at one time that you can only do certain things. And I remember at the one time I brought up, uh, when I, back when I was on the commission before that. Uh, you know, I had said to something about, you know, how these developers come in and they want to, and they, they buy the property, that they get it all passed, build it, that they don't do it, then they, you know, so on. So and I brought up the fact, I said, no, if they don't, they come in and they, and they don't pull a permit, I tried to get a, you know, to revise the ordinance because. I, and I think Tom and I had discussed this a little bit, then we couldn't. I said, they don't pull a permit within eighteen months, maybe we could redo that or uh. The zoning code for that particular area and drop it back down to try to control the building a little bit. But at the time that a moratorium that the governor uh, at that time, I think it was Rick Scott at the time, said we couldn't do that, but I mean, we could now the moratoriums off, isn't it?
It was like two years. Um, I thought we passed, I remember because I was, I was here when we had that discussion. I thought.
Well, we couldn't pass it because there was a moratorium, but I, that might be open now. It's just, it's just a thought that if we can, want to start to try to control a little bit of the growth. Since that we're built up so high at this point, that, you know, maybe uh, we can control a little bit more by revisiting some of those ordinances if we're allowed to do that. I don't know. Uh, what, what laws on it, but I mean, that's a way to maybe.
Okay, Eve is wanting to address it, so. Go ahead. Hold on, Eve. Okay, bye.
Hi, thank you so much. Very quickly, all of Corinne's uh. Resolutions that are done for these projects do have an expiration date of eighteen months. So there it, that's in the resolutions now, but please note the, there are emergency orders that are done by the governor. Based on whether it's for COVID or for hurricane and that extends all approvals. Um, for another time period.
We're back in the same boat again.
I'm sorry?
We're back in the same boat again. Now there's another moratorium because of COVID. So for the last six years, it's always been a moratorium. So we're spinning our wheels.
It's not a nec- necessarily moratorium, but it's an extension. So for example, I know of a property of Miami Beach that has gotten twelve years of extensions. Based upon the governor's orders.
Thank you.
You got it.
Thank you, mayor.
Okay, um, so I'll, so I'll go back and have a conversation with the city manager and we'll try to figure those things out. Um, the next is the memorial tree program. Commissioner Luellen?
Thank you, there. Um, I I put this on here because actually tomorrow is the one-year anniversary of my mother's passing. And because of COVID, um, we never really were able to do a proper um. Memorial service um, or anything for her. And I was considering doing something that would be permanent in nature, um, that it doesn't have to do with like a, a, a big gathering or anything like that, but that would be something that's. Outside and that would be there forever. And I was talking about, you know, purchasing a tree and planting it someplace um, in her honor. So I was talking to our city manager about this to see if there was something um. If she was familiar with anything like this in other cities. And there are programs in a lot of cities where you do memorial trees, where you um, people can come and donate. Um, pay for a certain um, thing and the, you can choose, you have a certain number of different types of trees that you can plant. And you do a little, a little plaque or something and you plant the tree somewhere, either in a, in a passive park or something like that within the city. And you have a little plaque as a little more remembrance for somebody. Um, and it's just something that I think would be really nice because it is, um, and you know, we have, we have a lot of passive parks that have, that have space and. It would just be nice to be able to have that option for us and it wouldn't really cost the city any money. If anything, we'd be making some money off of it because people would have to. Donate some money to the city to have it done. Um, and I think it would just be a nice way to honor some of the people that have passed, especially after COVID, since there were so many people that we lost. Um, and it would also be good for the environment because there's nothing wrong with planting more trees. We all, we all know about trees. We've had lots of issues with trees over the last six months. Um, so and I, I actually like to have the city manager, if you could, explain about some of the programs, because I know we talked about it, but. You know, you, I know you did some research for me on this, so I wanted to ask you about it, if you could, please.
I mean, if I may, through the, through the, through the chair, um, we've done this in in other cities. Um, and I've discussed this with with Fernando and with with Dinsir. And it's a win-win. Basically, what it does is a memorial tree um, program that would have a a certain fund. We would um, have X amount of tree species, all native species, both oaks. And um flowering native trees. Um, it would be totally turnkey. For example, if turnkey, it would be two hundred and fifty or three hundred dollars. It would come the tree, the tree planting. The memorial plaque and it would be a win-win with zero cost to the city and certainly lots of benefits for for our residents. Um, our passive parks um, could uses um, certain designated soils that can benefit from more trees. So I think that this is something that is tremendously beneficial to a city that really loves tree. And a way for our our residents and in employees uh, to be able to honor their loved one with a living thing, which is the tree.
And I, and I think it would be nice also because you have um, you're, you're bringing a new life from death. Um, and you know, being able to choose the type of tree, I think is also important. Like, for example, my mother. I don't know that anybody here knew my mother. My mother was larger than life. My mother had a very big personality, um, life of the. My mother was larger than life. My mother had a very big personality, um, life of the party. Everybody knew her. She loved to talk. Um, and I would love to see something bright and flowering that would be able to, um, remind people who did know her of her, um, every year when it blooms. So, like that sort of a thing. So, and we all have different, you know, perceptions of, of our loved ones. So I just think it would be a nice thing to do. A lot of places, you know, you sell bricks and things like that. But this, I think, would be much better because it also goes towards the environment as well.
Commissioner Otten?
Um, uh, Commissioner, I can't believe it's been a year. My goodness, it seems time flies. Um, and I think that is such a, a wonderful thing for you to have for your, your mother because it was such a hard thing to not be able to have a closure at a funeral spring. But I think that's such a beautiful and lovely thought. And so as much as I would love it for my friend, for you, uh, I would love it for the residents to have that option as well. And I don't see any downside to it. And, uh, I, I think it's a really, uh, a really beautiful program that you've thought of. I'd have my full support.
Um, it definitely has my support, uh, just start with that. But I think we had something like this, so you may wanna, I, I don't know who would be the responsible department to kind of try to look into something. I, because I grew up around City Hall, it used to be the library, but the permit department is now. I know that they had, um, trees that were dedicated to some employees who may have passed away in City Hall that were dedicated to them, but I, I cannot even begin to remember when or where. So before you go out and, you know, talk to other cities, maybe someone who has been in the city for a long time may have information on maybe how they already did it or maybe it's something way back in the stash that we need to bring back to life. But I think it is a tremendous and a wonderful idea, just like the same ones that we do with the bus. We have some benches in the park, benches that we also do that for that. And I know that a tree gives off life and it keeps giving off because it, you know, but with everything, all the benefits that trees have, and, um, I think it's a great idea. So I'm looking forward to you bringing that in. You have my support. And so, um, I'm assuming that we have the support of the Vice Mayor and Commissioner Davis. But I'm saying, okay, great. All right, thank you.
Go forth, Hannah.
Thank you.
Um, next we are going to schedule the City Commission Summer Recession. I think, uh, that is.
It's gonna take off from May to September.
I was like, what, Tom? Typically, I thought we took off the.
One, one meeting each month, July and August?
Yes, but I think it was, uh, I don't remember if it was the first or the second in June that we used to take off. I know it was first in, um, July.
Mayor?
Yes, there you go.
Hi. The last several years, you've taken off the first meeting in July and the first meeting in August. Um, that's how you proceeded. The only requirement in July is that, uh, the budget process requires that you set the tentative millage rate and the, and the proposed solid waste, stormwater and fire assessment rates. So you have to have a July meeting and those rates need to be transmitted to the property appraiser's office by the end of July.
Okay.
So you could, you could proceed how you wish if you wanna cancel the, the first meetings in July and August. Uh, and if you wanna move the July twenty-seventh meeting to like the twentieth, either way you go, uh, there will be a period of five weeks and four weeks between commission meetings. Um, if you leave the July meeting on July twenty-seventh, there will be five weeks from the last meeting in June to the July twenty-seventh meeting. If you change that meeting to say like the twentieth, um, then that'll leave five weeks between that meeting on the twentieth and your second meeting in August, which is the twenty-fourth. I mean.
I don't see a point in moving the twenty-seventh if we're still gonna be the same amount of time that's in between. Um, more so, uh, so, um, Commissioner, which, which meeting do we wanna leave off in July?
First, just take the.
Mayor, can I ask a question, please?
Okay.
Uh, sorry, you know, July, I'm supposed to go to, uh, with my granddaughters, uh, to, to Royal Beach for a tournament. And I'm just trying to get ahold and find out which it is. If I, if it falls a meeting night, would I be able to do that virtually at that time?
I, I think so. I think for a while, we still need to have an option. I know that Tom Ansborough would, would, um, be able to clarify that we would, even if we go back in person, we need at least three people at the actual, um, City Hall in order to have a quorum. But I think you would still be able to, to be with us virtually and how things have changed. I don't think anyone would have an issue with that.
All right, I hope it doesn't fall the same way because I'd rather be in the group here. But I hate to, uh, hang out here. Go ahead, you guys will talk. My daughter's calling me and I'll find out.
Mayor, if, if, if I may, it, even if we have one meeting in July, I prefer it to be sooner rather than later. And even if we just bring the item for, um, the solid waste and, and the millage rate, um, because I think if we leave it for the last meeting, we're, we're cutting it short, so.
Okay, I mean, we, we've, we've always kind of cut it short. We've never had an issue. I don't think we've ever had a back and forth of, no, that's too much, and no, we don't want to, um, historically speaking. So I don't think you're gonna have an issue with that. I don't mind either meeting personally. So it's whatever, it's whatever the group wants to do, but I don't think you're gonna have that issue with that.
Perfect, thank you.
I can just say that I don't care, honestly, because I don't generally go anywhere. So, and if I do end up having something planned, I'll work around it. So it's, I, I'm very flexible. Whatever you wanna do is fine with me, whatever works best for staff.
I will join, uh, Commissioner Llewellyn in the I don't care camp.
Okay, so let's do this. Let's have the first meeting in July. And then, um, we'll have an even longer break then because you have the first meeting in July. And then you won't, if we don't meet the first meeting in August, we don't come back until the end of August. How does that work for everyone?
Hi.
Good. That's good. I'm here. But I was going away the twenty-eighth of July, so I'm good for all that.
See what I'm saying? Gotcha.
Okay, to clarify, Mayor.
Oh, hold on, let me try to unmute Commissioner Davis. Thanks. You should have the ability. Okay, go ahead.
Well, July is a very special month, so I just need to know what date it would be in July because I, I do have a birthday.
It's your birthday?
July sixteenth, but I usually do go away or do something at that time.
Perfect. If we, if we met on July the thirteenth, then you have the rest of the month to celebrate for your birthday.
Yeah, wow.
Does that work, Tom Schneider?
Mayor, if it works for the commission, it works for me.
All right, so we will meet July thirteenth and then we will not meet on the twenty-seventh and we will not meet on the tenth and come back on the twenty-fourth of August.
Party time, vacations.
I know, this is so exciting.
If I could just ask, could the city clerk please just send us an email with a reminder about that just so that I can make sure I get it on my calendar? I just wanna make sure.
I can do that, yes.
All right.
I presume we'll have to do the same thing for the CRA, move our CRA being?
Um, yes, well, the, the CRA, the CRA is okay in July for the thirteenth, but then they will, uh, likely meet on the twenty-fourth, uh, since the first meeting of the commission is being canceled in August, so.
Okay.
They'll be good. I'll send an email to everyone.
Thank you.
Um, thank you.
The next we're gonna hear from, um, the Director of Human Services, Resources, sorry, Linda Gonzalez, who are volunteers and internship program, um, for the City Commission. Go ahead, Linda.
Okay, good evening. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, City Attorney. Um, thank you for allowing us to do this presentation tonight. And I'm here with Jim Sheriff, our labor attorney, and he'll be here to help answer any questions. Um, I wanna thank everybody for meeting with us individually to get all of your feedback and support on, on our intern and volunteer program. So we have a brief slideshow for you, a PowerPoint presentation. And then at the end of it, um, we have some questions that we are trying to get some feedback on so that we can work to finalize this policy for you. So I'm gonna go ahead and see if I can share this screen with you. Okay. Can everybody see that okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. And Jim, I, I think you're on also there. Just wanted to make sure. He's somewhere there. I think I saw him on. Okay, I'll move right along. Okay, so this is just the basics of the policies that were sent out to everyone. Um, part, there is a separate policy for interns, a separate policy for volunteers. And this is specific to, uh, working with elected officials. So for the volunteers, what we heard is that, um, there was interest in, in considering volunteers to be signed to an individual commission member or even, uh, having a pool of volunteers as an idea for city events or some combination of both of those things. And of course, um, volunteers, they can offer a lot of different functions, both for the city and also for their own personal growth. Um, for internships, we explored two different types of interns. One, we're calling a university intern, which is a formal internship. And we had our very first meeting with the Nova University. And it was actually, uh, a really great experience talking with them. And each university we're gonna find has their own criteria and own information on how to go about having a, working with them for a university intern. What was interesting about Nova is they actually have an intern class that's three credits where you sign up for the class, like you would sign up for, you know, a biology class or a math class or whatever. It's an intern class and they have criteria, of course, to, um, join that class, like any other university class. They get three credits and they have to commit a minimum of fifteen hours a week. And each university, I think we're gonna find out as we meet with them, they'll have different forms and information that we have to complete and fill out. And they've actually asked us to develop a job description so they can advertise for the intern, um, whenever we get that program going. And of course, this candidate would have to be a university student. The informal internship, we're gonna refer to just as an OJT and on-the-job training intern. And it's a little bit different. And this is a person that may not be associated with the university, but they may be on vocational track. They may or may not be attending college. They won't meet the legal definition of an intern. But it would give them, um, hopefully, a great job experience. And with all of these things, of course, it's a big commitment on the mentor on each of you who are choosing to have, um, either an intern or a volunteer. And right now, we do have one intern, informal intern, and one volunteer that we're working with without a formalized program being set up. So some of the considerations, and these are just bullet points from the policy that you have. We called the member, a commission member, the coordinators, human resources. Uh, we don't really have a volunteer coordinator department, so we're just, um, referred for now. Saying that HR would really be your coordinator of these programs. Um, and the main benefit, again, especially of a university intern, is geared towards the intern. So this would be somebody who has a specific major, whether that's public administration or business administration or whatever it is, maybe they are majoring in finance and they want to work with, um, you know, specific areas within finance or whatever that may be. And the university would help match up, um, the intern to the, the different, um, either companies or cities, uh, that are looking to have interns. And again, volunteers, um, that can just cover a wide range of things. So to ensure success of these programs, um, there's requirements, you know, for us. There's, there's commitment, coordination of goals and objectives. Um, and one of the suggestions that came out of the meetings we had was to actually have an orientation so that we would, um, you know, we, if you're ready to have an intern or volunteer, you know, HR would set up, just like we did for our, our newly elected officials, where the, we, we bring you in, we go over the forms and documents that might, um, be required depending on what it is that you have an intern or even a, a university volunteer. There'd be different reporting requirements, um, and just to make sure that everyone's ready. So it'd be an orientation, not only for the intern or the volunteer, but for the mentors as well, just to be sure that the program moves along smoothly. So, uh, there would be more than likely goals and objectives for each day. There's learning objectives that come out of the university to make sure that we're meeting them. And then use of resources. So we know that, um, we know that there's orientation, there's background checks that we do. There's, um, weekly monitoring of required documents, um, there's direct and indirect expenses. We don't have anything right now budgeted in terms of, um, our interns or, and we don't have paid internships either. That's something we could certainly consider for the future. Um, with Nova University, they were open to both paid and unpaid internships. Uh, some places they pay, it looks like the average pay is about fifteen dollars an hour, but that's gonna vary depending on, um, what company is working with that internship. And there's also, since these are new programs, um, we may wanna just, however we start off, we start off on some, some form of a, a test or limited basis and also consider our COVID-nineteen safety precautions on what can be done virtually and what, what could be done in person. There's also timeframes to think about. So for the university interns, for example, they were, they're talking about, uh, potentially like a semester, going over a semester for their classes. And volunteers, um, key points on volunteers, just some legal aspects of, and compliance points. In, when we are talking about bringing volunteers or interns in, they can't replace the work of an employee. So with the, with, um, the interns working strictly with the, the elected officials, since there aren't employees, that's not going to be an issue. It could be an issue with, if the intern or volunteer is with other city departments. Um, we, we have to just keep in mind of all of the things about, they can't replace employees. They can't result in the layoff of any employee. Our, the way we drafted our policy, we wouldn't have relatives of city employees or members of city commission not eligible for volunteer assignments. Uh, they would be providing services in the, within the municipal boundaries of the city and not be involved in, in campaign elections. Volunteer policy key points again, um, just to make sure that all the activities are conducted in a safe environment. HR will be, um, for now, we were thinking the coordinator for the program to be the liaison between the volunteer and the member of the city commission, um, helping you with paperwork, making sure that we're in compliance with whatever requirements we have from the university. And, uh, the program guidelines, again, could be different for each university and different for a, um, OJT, uh, intern or a volunteer. So the, the commission would have responsibilities to submit the program outline to HR. And again, for the university interns, they're gonna want goals and objectives that are coming through, whether there's going to be specific, um, activities that they're gonna be involved with or if there's gonna be assignments that they have, if they're gonna be involved in a work group, depending again on their major, um, days and hours of assignments, where the activities will occur, who they're gonna interact with, how they're gonna be supervised. And if we're talking about minors in some of these cases, of course, there's parental consent that's required. Um, and then we have to also keep in mind about the level of supervision that someone may need if they're a minor compared to someone who is an adult. And then we'd have expect, expectations for our volunteers themselves, that they would be, um, same as a city employee, um, we would have to monitor for the basic things of, um, being respectful, making sure that there's no drug or alcohol, they're smoke-free, um, making sure that they're reporting on safe conditions, all of the basic safety guidelines that we would have for any of our employees. And so we would have that as part of our orientation that we would go through with them. Internships, we talked about the two different types of interns that we would, that we would look at. And then administration of the program would be similar to HR would help coordinate the program. We would work with, um, and we've started again, those meetings. We have, I think, three meetings scheduled and we're working with two other universities. We talked about possibly working with high schools or vocational schools, um, helping, um, in different areas, potentially for credit, for, uh, volunteer activities that is required in high schools. And we would coordinate with each of those, um, different institutions to make sure that we're in compliance with the requirements. We would help train, um, and orient city commission members. We would prepare periodic reports to the city manager and city commission. We would continue to work with our labor. We would continue to work with our labor council and city attorney's office because things always come up when you're working with any group of employees. We thought about issuing a certificate of completion to the intern and indicating the dates. And then also possibly how would they present a program in the end, whether they may do a presentation for city department, city commission. There's just lots of different things that we could do to make this a really great internship for them. And of course, one of the most important things is an evaluation. When we had our intern, our informal intern over the summer, you know, we did an evaluation for him, and he did an evaluation on us. And he talked about what we did well, what we could do better. And so we did a mutual evaluation, which was very helpful. Other intern provisions to think about, and these are all again in the policy outline that we sent to you, is just to review the duties regularly to make sure that we're meeting learning objectives, tracking hours, reporting documents, and again, presentation at the end or, or at intervals to demonstrate how the learning activities were met. And there will be other, as we heard from Nova, there will be other objectives. And again, we would go over those in an orientation if you are getting a university intern. And then we get to the fun part, the questions and discussion. And this is where, when we sent you the policy, you saw some blanks in there that we didn't fill in because we weren't sure how to fill them in because it really was an illegal question or an HR question. And this is where I just wanted to ask for your help and feedback. So we talked about what would the minimum age that we're talking about for an intern or volunteer, the number of volunteers that could be assigned. And again, that number would be different if we're talking about a university intern, but we would be more, it would be more flexible otherwise. And then the number of hours a week that we think a volunteer should work, should that depend on their age? So, so Jim, before we just turn this over, I don't know if you wanted to add anything else there?
No, thank you, Linda. Good evening, Mayor and Commission. I think Linda's done a very nice job of covering it, both in the Q and A, lead into, to your discussion, the outline itself and the draft policies, which we worked on very hard to provide some structure to both internships and volunteer programs. So I think it's time for Linda and I to sit back a little bit and for you to engage in the discussion that gets to the answer of these four questions, plus any other questions that you have.
Yes, thank you. I know on that phone call we had with the university, Linda, they also stated something about a timeline and when we would need to. So just because an intern is interested in being your intern, if they're going to go through their program at their school, they typically start that semester. So as for the next time with just this one college, because that's the college that we just recently spoke to, if you wanted an intern that would count as a college credit in their program, you have a deadline to submit your request for an intern so they can go out and see if they can engage with those university students that would like to participate. Is that correct, Linda?
Yes, and I'll just skip ahead one slide to give you some idea of that timeline and what we were, and then we can go back a second. But these were, this is the date we met with NSU, and we have the other universities coming up. And basically, since they work on a semester basis, what we were thinking about, since there's a lot of work to do for university interns, we have to, we're gonna hear, we're gonna meet with all the universities, but then we have to also go back and talk about, do we want to work with all of the universities, some of the universities, some of them may or may not work within the criteria that you are looking for. And then we have to identify either, you know, if it's going to be elected officials or department heads who wish to participate because it is a very, very big time commitment. We then have to create job descriptions because they actually, for the credit for the semester that the mayor pointed out, we have to post them. So we have to actually, if you say that I wanna have an intern, you have to write like a job ad, which of course we would help you with so that they know when they post it out to university students, they know what they're looking for. Then we would have to create, work with them to create the forms and documents. Either, you know, we'll have to do that for our volunteers, OJT interns, and specific university interns. And then we have to also talk about an option for academic credit. And Nova has something called experiential internships that they pointed out, which is more flexible and not necessarily by semester. So there's a lot to do to really put the program in place the right way. So we were looking at potentially, they said we, that they would be able to start for the fall program 2021, they would need to have the announcement or the advertisement ready for August 1st. And we thought that that would give us some time to develop this program the way that you want to see it. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, yes, thank you. And was I clear in understanding that the interns will have to sign a code of conduct?
Yes, yes, they're gonna have to sign a code of conduct and we'll probably work towards developing what some of the universities have now, which is actually like, it's like a handbook, you know, with everything put in there so that when we sit down and do an orientation with, with each of you, it's gonna look a little different depending on, is it a volunteer? Is it an OJT intern? Is it a university intern? And which university is it with? And so there would be a lot of information and forms incorporated in that. And that's what we, that's the next step. Once we, once we formulate these questions in the policy, that would be our next step.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Yes. Hi, Linda. I love the program. So far, so good. When you, when we were just having this discussion now, though, this, one of the things that jumped out at me regarding the interns specifically, when we're talking about the OJT interns, the university will have their own requirements and specifications, but the OJT seems like it's kind of ambiguous right now as far as what the criteria is going to be, be required of that group of interns. And I just wanna make sure that, because I believe that there should be a specific set of objectives that are specific to the job that, you know, even though each commissioner would have a different, you know, maybe they have different things they need their interns to do, but there should be a certain amount, maybe 10 objectives or something that we could all agree on. So when you do the evaluation process, that these objectives are smart in the fact that they are specific, you know, measurable, you know, realistic and timely, and realistic and timely. So I just wanna make sure that we have something that is going to be overall for the OJT intern as well as for the university intern, which will have very specific requirements.
Yes, and I, I agree with you 100%. And so the university, they'll give us criteria, you know, they'll advertise and they'll, they'll match us up and they'll have, they'll have criteria not only for the intern but for us. But when we, it's kind of like hiring an employee, you know, even though they're not necessarily an employee, they have to know what their job is, right? So you have to have a job description, they have to know what their goals and it's called learning objectives. These are the things that you're supposed to accomplish. These are the things that it's my job to teach you during this time. And those learning objectives, those should all be done and completed prior to you ever, you know, meeting the intern so that we know that we're, we're setting you up with a person who these learning objectives make sense, either the, either for their academics or in the case of an OJT intern, to further their, perhaps their work experience. So this is why setting this up correctly makes a lot of sense. Or else they show up on the first day and you, and you say, well, what are we gonna do today? So, you know, they, you could, they could be assigned to specific projects to do either long-term or short-term projects, and all that would have to be thought out ahead of time. I agree with you.
Commissioner Luella?
Yes, thank you. Well, then this is, and I agree with what Commissioner Davis just said, in making sure that there's a specific set of criteria that we know needs to be followed. With that in mind, I'm wondering, since this is a new program, if maybe the first time that we try it, we don't do OJT interns. We just go with the formalized intern process and not reinvent the wheel because we already have criteria from the universities because they do this sort of thing. And then this way, we can kind of see how that goes. And then the next time out, maybe tweak it and be able to do some other things.
Yeah, we can set this up however you give us direction to set this up. You know, I think whatever we do, we just wanna make sure that we do it, like everything else, we wanna make sure that everything's in place. We do it right the first time. And that it's gonna be a really great experience for each of you and a really great experience for the intern or volunteer and that we're, we're very prepared to take them on. You know, a lot of times when, you know, you have an intern, it's hard for, it's hard for everyone to spend the necessary time, and you're talking about 15 hours a week. And this isn't somebody who can be in the background. This is somebody that if you're talking about a credit of 15 hours a week, if you think about it, it's a huge commitment of time to be able to supervise someone. And, and you can assign projects and they can work independently a lot of times, but these are all things to consider.
Thank you. I wouldn't be in favor of doing that. I'm actually one who asks that we have both because everyone, everyone isn't in college. And while I do agree that we should have objectives and goals for even those who are not in college, it's not, it's not hard to duplicate what we're doing with a college intern to just say that, you know, the other interns that are not in college will still have to meet certain, you know, objectives and goals. And, and another thing, just because you are at a college or university doesn't mean that you've gone through their intern program. My, my current intern is a full-time student at FIU, but he is not going through an intern program like through the, the development, business development, whatever program that the other colleges may have. It was, it's to my understanding, because I asked them, they don't even have college credits that they can use for that. So we, just because you're not going through the actual university in their program doesn't mean that you, we should turn away people who are not necessarily in college. They may be in trade school, they may be in vocational school, or they may be in between careers trying to figure out, you know what, I think this is what I want to do, or let me see if this is going down that path. But I think that we can mirror the type of program and some of the requirements or the objectives that the universities have in order to create this other one. But I think that we can do all three, the intern, both internship programs and the programs, all at the same time and be accountable and responsible in the manner that we are presenting that. Linda, is that an issue to mirror the objectives and some of the requirements that some of the university have to bring? You know, you bring back the, the most important ones that you feel are most important and bring those back to us that we are going to decide with the intern, the university internship program?
Yeah, we can certainly develop it. I think that the timeframe that we are suggesting, which is for the fall of 2021, to have something in place for that, I think that that's a good timeframe to give us a few months to set this up. You know, when I was looking through some of the, the information on what's the startup time, and it can, it says, you know, it can be several months just to make sure the program is in place. So, you know, my, my concern would just be to make sure that we have everything ready and in place because we want this to be successful. We wanna make sure that, you know, you're very prepared and you have every opportunity to understand what the objectives are, you know, what papers you have to fill out, what the reporting is, and that the intern is gonna have a true experience where that when they do an evaluation on us, they can come back and say, you know, this is, this is all the great stuff that I learned, this is the experience I have, because they're gonna be very honest with us. So I think with the, with the timeframe that we're suggesting, I think we can get things in place and make sure we're doing things the right way.
Awesome, thank you. So what, what, what do we need to fill in? Let's, let's go down this and see what we need to fill in so we can then discuss as a commission what we're gonna decide.
Jim, do you wanna help through this, these questions?
Sure, and you could do these side by side or take them, go down each column by itself. But let's start with the, with the interns and the volunteers, the minimum age. Obviously, with respect to the interns, if we're talking university interns, it's pretty clear what their age is gonna be. They're gonna be college, university, or vocational school age to do that. So that's probably 17 or 18. So then that, if you shift over to the volunteers, you may be looking at your discretion as, at a younger group of individuals. You know, people that are in high school, maybe even people that might be in junior high school. There's, there's really no limit, it's a policy decision for the commission.
Are there legal issues with that, though? I'm sorry. For liability purposes is what I'm concerned about. If you have somebody under the age of 18.
There's no, there's no, there's no increased liability based upon that distinction of younger than 18, greater than 18. Point of fact, pick up the newspaper any day of the week and most of the people you see being exposed to, to liability are probably more in the 30 and 40, 50-year-old age range.
I was going to say, I guess I'll put a recommendation and we can go up and down and see if, if that makes sense. So the minimum age for a intern, oh, okay, I guess you guys have it. Look, first question, okay, I was like, wait.
Yeah, I see.
For an intern, I believe what, they would either have to be in college or, I mean, that's, that's the only thing that can trump that age, or at least 18. So if you have graduated high school and you're in college at 18, then obviously you would be able to do it. So I would, I would recommend 18 unless you are, you started college earlier, you're, you know, doing dual enrollment.
I think a senior in high school could do be, be an intern.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Job intern, you know, I wouldn't go, I was just thinking 17. That's really just a year, but I was just thinking they could be a senior in high school and still be an intern.
Okay.
I agree with 17. I was, at 17, I interned at the city of Davie mayor's office. So I think, yeah, I know, I knew. So I, I think senior year, especially senior year, you're really trying to, you have some extra time. I, I think you could handle it.
Okay, so senior in high school or 17, whichever one fits. Is that okay?
Okay, yep, that's, that's good. And that is for interns or is that for volunteers also?
No, just for interns.
Just interns, okay.
Volunteers, the minimum age, I wouldn't, I wouldn't feel comfortable if they were under the age of 14. What happened?
I would say 16. Because I, aren't they limited at a certain age as to how many hours they can work?
Age that you can go and get a job at Publix, I think, in Florida. I don't know the law, so I guess.
I remember at 15, you go and get working papers and I could only work certain, a certain number of hours.
But I think kids who can get service learning hours. I'm not, I'm thinking the volunteers are much more open and they could come and help us bring water bottles or, you know, get T-shirts or do whatever they do. You know, I'm thinking that they, they would, they would, we should be able to allow middle school people or kids who have, who have the ability to get service learning hours. Maybe we put them in a pool or maybe we put them in a different category, or maybe we don't have them assigned to a specific person. But maybe they can be for events where you can just have, you know, where you would have a group of, of kids or students or where we could partner with our middle school to allow certain volunteers from our middle school to do certain events with the city. I don't think that we should cut them off necessarily because they, they can get, they can get service learning hours.
Okay, so I think that we can have both as far as like, you know, one person that will be dedicated. Because I think about the Youth Advisory Council. I think about if you have young ladies or young men that wanna be a part of that and they can mirror you or whatever they would want at their request, obviously. But, and I also think that it is, it is a good idea to start a partnership with our schools, with our middle schools and say, hey, you know, these are opportunities that we may have, these are all the events we have coming up. I think we could do both. So I guess the minimum age would, I don't even know how old they are in the sixth grade. I would say seven at least. I, I mean, sixth grade is a bit young. They're, they're still trying to figure out middle school at that point in time, so.
Yeah, that's very young. And but you also, also, if you're gonna do this, I mean, don't you want them to be doing something that's worthwhile? You don't just want them to be errand boys and girls. They're not just gonna be running around.
I don't mean errand boys and girls. I have a whole program for girls that start at 10 years old. They're not errand boys and girls. They learn how to speak, they learn how to do poetry, they learn how to do leadership skills from a very early age. It's only because I teach them is that I know that they're capable of doing more than just errands, so.
Absolutely, that's my point. I just wanna make sure that we're not Absolutely, that's my point. I just want to make sure that we're not.
It didn't come off right because I'm brainstorming, but I, you know, I.
I mean, I know, I know all about that. I'm not worried about that. I'm just concerned about, like, I don't want it to end up being a situation where we just, you know, you know, somebody thinks it's okay, or you could just send somebody off to pay off their dry cleaning or something. I just, I don't want it to be that kind of a program. It needs to be a real program where people, it would be, you know, these are kids that are really learning something.
Well, that's where the goals and objectives come in. And that's where, that's where we make sure that, you know, we're not using people to go get coffee, you know what I mean? So we, we, we make sure that in the goals and the objectives, that that's why they're measurable, so that people aren't, you know, so, so, so that you have checks and balances for that kind of stuff.
Okay, so minimum age, Commissioner Davis, what is the age since you are?
It would be twelve. For a pool, for a pool of volunteers, for a pool, but not for individuals, but.
Well.
We'll go with, or maybe I'll.
Do it. And, and you may have some, you may have some mature twelve-year-olds that you are able, I mean, my godson is, is, is thirteen and he's very mature. And so.
Maybe we do thirteen. I'm, I'm okay with that, but, you know.
Is that part of the pool? Okay. For individual, no.
Oh, yeah.
I agree.
Pool, a pool, like it was a group. We're going to say, we're going to take this group of middle schoolers, they can be.
Yeah, I think that.
Individual, then what's the age? So we can.
Well, wait, can, can we ask, I mean, are, we have, we have labor council here, we have HR here. Do you all know, have you checked in other cities what the ages are? Like, do we have a sense of what other cities do and how young they do go? I don't, I don't want to, you know, start setting an example or going way too young if there's other cities that are doing something like this.
Well, I can tell you that our, our Parks and Recreation Director, um, he, his feedback was, um, he thought the minimum should be fourteen. And because, um, thirteen and under qualify for aftercare summer programs. So his, his recommendation working with kids was, was fourteen, but it's really different everywhere. And Jim, I don't know if you've seen anything specific.
I, I have not been able to find any consistency in, in that. It really is a, an issue. Most of the volunteers, uh, we're talking about in this category are volunteers for park and recreation programs. I'm not for, um, alignment with, uh, members of a city commission.
Okay, let me try to group up what I've heard, so.
I haven't had a chance to speak yet.
I can't see, I can't see you. That's why I said when the screen is shared, I only can see if someone has their.
I can't find where to raise my hand, so.
Yeah, let me see if I can.
Participants. And then you can probably, go ahead.
Okay, um, there you go.
Okay.
I think, I think that, uh, fourteen-year-old's too young. I think sixteen-year-old borderline. And I think we should be closer to, uh, an eighteen-year-old adult to, adult to get into this. My opinion on that is, is not, uh, any reason that, uh, Commissioner Davis said that she can train people, uh, train the girls or boys to do whatever they, that's fine. But there's certain levels of training, that's why they have grades in the school. And you learn, you learn according to your, your age level of which you're capable, I'm not saying that they can't do it. Uh, I have two thirteen-year-olds or thirteen and a fourteen-year-old granddaughter, and I would not want to put them in that position. Because I think sometimes it's a little bit, uh, seeing the certain things that we go through, come to the meetings, watching, uh, arguments going on, or discussions, or, uh, things that happen, I don't think if they're prepared at thirteen or fourteen years old to go through that. I think that, um, I think that sixteen, in my opinion, is borderline. Then also, um, you mentioned the fact that, you know, uh, I think that Eric has a little bit of a point there too. When you're in the thirteen-year-old range, you're in, you're in aftercare and fourteen, you're, you're volunteering to help take care of the thirteen-year-olds. I think up to sixteen-year-old, and I think that they're still too mu- too much of a kid. I'm just giving you my opinion and how I feel about it, but I can tell you right now that if I end up doing a mentoring, uh, for any type of intern or volunteer, it won't be for anything less than probably eighteen, maybe sixteen.
Okay.
That's just my opinion.
I, I don't think that when we say volunteer, that means that they have to go and, and babysit or, or be under. I think a volunteer program could be.
I wasn't talking about that, Mayor. I was just saying, I'm just expressing the difference.
No, you're fine. Yeah, you're, yeah, we're fine. Um, I think that a volunteer program could be, oh, okay, this is what we have going on. I would love for you to come in and volunteer. Not every day, they wouldn't be on commission meetings. I, I would doubt any thirteen, fourteen. I don't even know if any of the interns really want to sit through permission meeting. So I don't think that will be an expectation. I think you have your goals and, and well, I, I, I'm not sure with, um.
What would you be, what would you be teaching them as an intern then if they're not going to be involved in the, uh, the process of, uh, of government?
This is volunteer.
Talking about separate things. So right now, we're talking about the volunteers. The volunteers probably would not be doing, you know what, go to these other cities and kind of see what they do with, with your, your, with mentorship programs here in the cities. They wouldn't be doing that type of research and understanding how government works for that. They would just probably be volunteering, you know, if, if there are, um, uh, say for instance, uh, when we went to the mayor's conference a couple of years ago, they had another conference that allows some of the youth to be able to go to those types of, 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 um, programs. And even now we have the youth advisory council, but if we didn't, our volunteer that has kind of been working with us when we do a toy job, or when we do a feeding, or when we, we do different events, um, certain things that you can teach them at a different level, that it's age-appropriate, um, versus expecting what you would expect a university volunteer, I, I, some to do. Some, let's, let's try to, okay, every, everyone has kind of spoke, so let's try to move this forward. So what I've heard, and we can vote it up or down, um, so what, from what I've heard, ages thirteen, that would be minimum for group volunteers. And age, I don't know, fifteen, that would be for individual volunteers. Is that okay? Who was that not okay with?
I'd say sixteen.
I'd rather sixteen for volunteers, individuals.
Individual. I would say sixteen individual.
Okay, so, uh, we can't hear you, Commissioner Otman, if you're talking to us. So, okay, thirteen minimum age for group and sixteen minimum age for individuals. Everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, I see consensus for that. Uh, what is the next question?
Okay, let me, let me go back to it really quick. Okay. All right, so then we got to the first question on both of these. And then, um, and let me just repeat back. So for interns, we said it would be a senior in high school, and for volunteers, it would be a minimum age thirteen for group volunteers and sixteen for individual, correct? Okay, great. Then the next question was the maximum number of volunteers that may be assigned to any commissioner or the maximum of interns that can be assigned to a commissioner.
When I first heard this, I was like, maximum two and two. I don't know if, I, I don't even, I don't know, but, um, maximum two and two. That's even if you can facilitate all of that, but.
One, I, I have to throw in here, I think it should be one, uh, because you really want to make sure that these interns are actually getting the benefit of the program. And if you have more than one, you're not focusing on them, you're more like you're teaching a class. But if you have one, you can really focus on them and really focus on what's going on. Plus, I've also seen some things going on in other cities right now where they're doing things like this. And there, and there are some cities that are getting a lot of grief for having multiple interns for commissioners. Um, and there, there, it's being questioned about the, um, you know, money that's being spent on it. And it's being questioned as far as the ethics. I'm not going to have my ethics question. So, um, I, I think one is sufficient.
Guys, Mayor, so, you know, sorry, I see you raised your hand, I couldn't get it out. You're muted, you're muted. unmute yourself.
I think that, uh, one or two is the level. I think we should have, I understand Commissioner, uh, Llewellyn's situation, and I can tell you that I would only ask for one. But, you know, I understand, Mayor, that you like, you would, you could probably do two without a problem. You know, you, you like it a little bit more than I would, I would have maybe more time or whatever. But I think that, I think, I think we should have two as the limit, and I think we should have the option to take one or two.
Okay.
I think we should leave it as an option to, uh, to each individual commissioner.
Right, well, we're just saying maximal, not that you have to, but maximal. Okay, so you max, your maximum two. Uh, Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Otman, you want to chime in?
I'm one intern, one volunteer.
Okay, Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, one, one maximum each, one maximum each. Because I don't think that you should be able, like, one volunteer and then one, one intern either type, just, yeah. But maximum two.
Well, this is what I'm saying. You may have zero volunteers or two interns, or zero interns or two volunteers, so.
But I know that if you have like the, if you have the, i- if you have the university intern, then you really need to focus on that particular university intern, like.
But let's just leave it as maximum one intern and one volunteer. We can move on past that. Perfect. All right, next question.
Okay, let me go back one more time. Okay, so maximum one and one. And then the last question was, so we know that for a university intern, it's going to depend on that university. If it's for college credit, what we heard from Nova and that one university, it's, they're going to tell us, they're going, you, you have to commit to fifteen hours a week. So we're really not talking about that as much. But the number of hours that you would want to have a volunteer, um, work or volunteer. And then I really, we're talking about an OJT intern. And then the other distinction that came up in conversations was, well, if there's an event like the beach cleanup, that might be different than having, you know, maybe everybody gets to do events, um, but then how many hours are we talking about in addition to that? So it's just things to consider in the discussion.
I would say, um, ten to fifteen hours for OJT or the interns if they don't have a restriction from the university. And for volunteers, unless it's an event, I would say no more than five hours a week.
That's what I had, pretty much. I had five for volunteers and ten to twenty-four interns.
I only say fifteen because I was on that call with the university and, you know, they said that they typically have fifteen. So I was going to like, I didn't want to go above that and have different levels of expectations, so those are.
Their schoolwork either. You don't want to take them away from their school responsibility.
Correct, correct. Correct.
Ten to fifteen for interns and, um, five for volunteers.
All right, any, anyone else? Is anyone not okay with that? All right.
Okay, well, I think we got through all of the questions then. Jim, are we missing anything?
No, that covers it.
Good. Thank you, thank you, thank you, everyone. I know this has been something in the making and we've gone back and forth. I know I've gone back and forth with Linda and, and, and Jim, and they probably, you know, say they want to hurry up and get this done. But I think in the end, it's going to be something that we can all, we very, very proud of. And we can bring a lot of experience to a lot of different individuals if they want to take part in it. But being prepared is always the best way to go, so thank you.
Thank you. And we want to thank you for all of your time and, and attention to this. And, and Mayor, thank you for sitting in on the, on the meetings with us. And we'll keep you updated because there may be different things that come up as we start to meet with the other universities. So we appreciate all your feedback.
Awesome. All right, Commissioner comments. Commissioner Davis?
Yes, am I on? All right, um, so I just wanted to say, I attended a couple of events that were, um, absolutely wonderful. The, uh, Broward Black Elected Officials hosted a, uh, Black History Month event. And, um, I was able to invite Olson Middle School and Principal Valerie Harris. And, uh, after our chaplain kicked off the prayer, uh, Dr. Osgood from the school board, I was able to introduce, um, Principal Harris and, uh, her and Nia Tom- Thomas, who sang the National Negro Anthem, and we had a wonderful celebration for Black History Month. On March the third, I attended, uh, the Saint Ruth Missionary Baptist Church Food Distribution with the Homeless Voice. They had so, so many things. They had chicken and beef and vegetables and fruit cocktail. And I mean, they had just an abundance. And so we had a lot of volunteers, we had BSO there. We had a lot of, a lot of nee- uh, community members, a lot of constituents that came through and really participated. And they are really, we di- we still have a great need out in our community. And I think food distributions really, really help, uh, bring the feeling of community together. So anytime that we can do that, um, I would love to, to continue to support that. On, uh, March the fifth, um, Brow- United Way of Broward County had their twenty-ninth Day of Caring and invited me to participate in that. And, uh, we sent that out to all of the residents, so we had over, uh, a hundred and fifty people to participate in that event. And that was absolutely phenomenal. And last but not least, I want to thank all of our BSO, all of our amazing, phenomenal women, who we went out yesterday for International Women's Day. That was an absolutely fantastic event. Um, it was great to be able to cut a ribbon on the actual International Women's Day. So whoever idea that was, that was absolutely brilliant. And anytime that we can work with our law enforcement and the people who serve our community and protect our community, I think it's absolutely wonderful. So that's all my comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Llewellyn?
Thank you. Um, the same, same thing with, I'll echo Commissioner Davis on the BSO thing. I think we all enjoyed ourselves yesterday. That was, uh, wonderful. It was, um, nice to see so much participation, um, from both police and fire, um, and our sheriff and our fire chief. And everybody coming out and being a part of it was, it was very, very good. Um, and it's a lovely space. It's a good space. They've got a lot of room there and, and it's, it's nice to see. I don't think we've had any BSO station in about twenty years, so, um, we're definitely growing and needed, so, um, that's important also. I just wanted to, two, two things. One, MPO meetings, they keep getting canceled, just so you know. So they, they keep it, I keep putting them on my calendar and then I keep canceling them. So once, once we do finally have one, I will let you know. Uh, I am also still attending the CARES Act Task Force meeting through the Broward League of Cities. Uh, we are having regularly scheduled meetings with our, uh, various Broward County Commissioners. Um, we have been, uh, our, our task force has been meeting with the individual commissioners to discuss the CARES Act funding, what happened with the money that was distributed, uh, to the cities, and, uh, potential plans for upcoming monies, uh, which we're anticipating, uh, receiving, um, with the newest, uh, package that is hopefully going to pass, uh, this week from the federal government. There's supposed to be more money coming to the cities from that, um, so basically a continuation of the CARES Act funding. So, um, we are, uh, all of us are, are doing our best to, uh, uh, work with commissioners and make sure that they know, lobby them for, uh, what our needs are. And discussing some of the problems that we had last time in ways that we can, um, correct those problems in the future. As with everything, this is the first time anybody's been through a pandemic, so there were some bumps along the road, um, some bigger bumps in bigger cities. Our bumps were not so big, um, but, you know, there's always room for improvement, so we're discussing that on a regular basis. So, um, other than that, I don't really have anything else. Just, uh, have a good night.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Otman?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I'm sure we all received a lot of the same emails about the, the coyote situation. There was also a feature, I think it was two nights ago on, uh, on Channel Seven. I asked the city manager if she could look into it a little bit for us. Um, Steve Andresio, were you able to look into that at all and?
Yes, Commissioner Otman, if I may, through the chair, um, we had an opportunity, uh, very early this morning to reach out to the Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission, um, to discuss with them our concerns. Um, I spoke to several residents today, spoke to Commissioner, uh, Llewellyn as well. Um, and they were very, very responsive. Um, thank you for your suggestion. Uh, and, and in regards to the information about coyotes, um, we also had Katia draft a very, very good, um, social media post, um, to put out the information out there. Earlier today, a, a Mayor James sent me some information on a resident that, that suggested possibly looking at, at some signage. So it's been a very busy day with everything that we're doing, but being able to be responsive to our residents, um, is something that we've done. So Florida Fish and Wildlife has been contacted by us, by several residents, and we have the, the information out there. So thank you to all, all of you, particularly you, Commissioner Otman.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I think it was something a lot of us just learned that, uh, that in like sixty-seven counties, they have coyotes now in Florida. So I, I certainly didn't realize it was such a widespread problem, but apparently it is. Uh, whatever solutions are available to us, get that information out there for, uh, for residents to know because there's a lot of questions about what to do and what we can and, uh, and can't do. Um, and that's it. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Well, I'll make it short because everybody else has said about everything that needs to be said by the time it gets to me. I'm a lone soldier out here, just like I was yesterday at the, the National Women's Day, sitting there with all the women firefighters and, uh, women deputies. And I was the only male between the women commissioners. So I might, I might have thrown everybody aside here. So, um, I'm good, Mayor. I, I had a good time yesterday. Very proud of our city and what, uh, and what we're representing in our fire safety, uh, in our, uh, police force. Uh, I tell you, we're second to none out there. We should be proud of what we have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I, I, I'm the same. We, we've kind of heard everything and I echo everything that everyone has said. Um, so, uh, I, I guess, thank, thank you all for the support and moving things forward and, and important dialogue and being able to take things from it to build the best things that we can build for our city and our future. Um, and all of the food distributions are amazing. I want to remind people that I'm on Griffin Row from twelve to seven on Wednesdays every, every week. If you have a family, you can go and get a box there. Um, I don't have the address, but it is past Tropical Acres. Um, they do it every Wednesday from twelve to seven. And I, and I've been fortunate enough to do, um, food distributions as well. Um, I've, I've been doing them kind of in the northwest section of our Collins Elementary every Wednesday as well, uh, around five o'clock. And so it, it is a good feeling to be able to help people. And it's definitely a good feeling to have residents come back and, and really show their gratitude on, on how the city has been able to address their concerns and put our money where our mouth is. But our promises in, in, in purpose and action. And so, um, I am definitely fulfilled tonight. Um, we're going to go to appointments. Do we have anyone that would like to help? Oh, I, I have one for Parks and Recreation. I, I think that I forgot her name. Um, but do we have anyone, uh, Commissioner Davis, do you have any appointments that you would like to fill? I think it's just you and myself and then the General Employees Pension Board. Um, Louis Ramoli's term expires on the twenty-second. And I do see that he is interested, um, in continuing to serve. And then we do have a one commission appointment for a term beginning June. Oh, well, they're already in the middle of their term. It ends in June, um, in twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. Other than that, it's just you and I. Um, no, and I think Commissioner Llewellyn has one for Parks and Recreation.
I, I, I don't have somebody for that yet, uh, but I would recommend if Louis wants to re, renew his term for general pension employee that, uh, the general employees pension board, that we should probably renew it because those, those boards are always very hard to fill. And he has the history and is good at it. And I know he asked a question, so I think we should reappoint him.
Does anyone have an issue with that? No issues, okay. Um, I have.
Oh, go ahead.
No, 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 go ahead.
No, I just have one. Um, but it, I just, I learned recently that it has to be an ad hoc, um, appointment for the Education Advisory Board, Kenyatta McKee. She's, uh, an assistant principal, I found out at Olson Middle School, but she lives in Davie. So I still want, she's a very active member. And so I just, I know she would be an active member on the board. And so I was, uh, informed that I could add her as an ad hoc member.
But then you would still need a, would you still need a different type of an appointment?
She's the non-voting, yeah, she can't vote, so.
Well, is that your appointment or are you just adding that and you still have an appointment? I guess is what I'm asking is the appointment.
Adding that, I guess. I'm adding that and I still have a voting member.
Okay, I have someone who, um, is interested in serving, but they did ask additional questions. I told them that I did not have a credibility under the Education Advisory Board and that you did. But they, they just wanted a few questions. So I am, um, willing to forward this information to you. And maybe next time, you know, you could speak to him and see if it's someone that you want to consider for, for the educational advisory board. Is that okay?
Appreciate that. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, and I have someone from Parks and Recreation. I think her name is Simone, but I don't have her last name. Tom, I'll be able to get you her information. It would be for the Parks and Recreation Board.
Oh, my God.
Okay, that's, excuse me, that's fine, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Um, all right, do we have a motion in a second for the appointments?
Move to approve the appointments?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, administrative reports?
Yes, um, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commission. Um, residents of the great city of Dana Beach and our city team. I'm going to go a little bit out of order here because I have some very good news that I wanted to share with you today. Um, I convened a meeting, um, with our city attorney and the senior members of our team, uh, to go over an appraisal, um, that I ordered working with Mr. Ken Crosno, um, from the Colliers Group. Um, back in twenty nineteen, we, we embarked on, um, the challenges of our beach and moving forward with the game plan to be able to activate, um, the Ocean Park Plan and move forward with an RFP. Um, and we moved forward with some great discussions with FAU and DOT because there's three agencies involved. Long story short, because of COVID, it put everything on, on, on halt. Um, but we, we've now reached the, the pinnacle of this endeavor. Um, where FDOT, um, is granting us the opportunity, um, to purchase one and a half acres, actually one point four acres to be exact, um, that would allow us to move forward with the last piece. Um, because of the restrictions on this property and the lease with FAU, what would be worth in excess of ten to twelve million dollars would only cost us three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Uh, so what I am asking you today is to allow us to move forward with a letter of intent to FDOT. And the next step will be to enter into a contract that will come back to you all. I've discussed it with Frank, with the city attorney, with, um, Director Brown, Director Rodriguez. Um, and this is, would be my recommendation in the last piece of the puzzle so we can move forward with an RFP for the entire beach to include the Dana Beach Grill, um, the, the park there that we have a, a, a two hundred thousand dollar grant that we received from the state.
Um, will the money from the state cover the amount before we have to go? Uh, because I'm assuming the only time, uh, we would have to get that out of our reserves, correct?
Yeah, the three hundred and twenty-five thousand is really an investment on the opportunity for us to be able to have one and a half acres oceanfront.
So I understand that. I'm just asking, would it have to come from the reserves?
Yes, it would have to come from the.
The entire amount? We could have used the grant, or what is the grant for versus what?
The, the grant is a FERDA grant that we applied for and we received for the Tudy Adler Park Component.
Okay.
That's separate, but what we're doing is a total turnkey project. And we'll also facilitate, uh, the language in the RFP for design build. But basically, our desire would be to have contractors that have successfully done these type of projects so we can move forward as expeditionally as possible, put a shovel on the ground and, and cut the ribbon on really something really significant at the beach, which is what you all have wanted and what our community deserves.
And the land, um, that is up for sale, is that where currently FAU sits?
That's a piece of, of the FAU parcel, but actually it belongs to DOT. And that's what has made this challenging, but that's what gives us such a great sense of satisfaction because we were able to bring FAU, FDOT and the city together. So now we have this opportunity, uh, to enter into this letter of, of intent. Should you give me, you know, um, the, the support and, and the directive to continue to move forward? And that would be my recommendation. The attorney is here just in case I missed anything.
Okay, I want to, I want to ask Frank a question or, um, I want to, what was, what was it appraised for? Are we paying the appraised value or are we paying above the appraised value?
I would never, ever pay anything. And I'm going to jump in. I know Frank is there. We would never, and I would never recommend to, to pay anything beyond the appraised value. What they're asking us for is three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for one point four acres, um, oceanfront. Frank?
Yeah, that's exactly right. And, um, and the, the reason why there's such a wide, uh, just, you know, difference in what we could actually pay for this versus what the actual market value is is because that, that full price is based on if there were no lease on the property, if it was totally unencumbered. But, um, the issue is that there is a lease, there's a ninety-nine year lease between FAU and FDOT that that area can be used for only specific things. One of them is parking, so we don't have an issue building a garage there. So, um, but that's, that lease is what impairs the value of the property and which is what makes it more, much more affordable for the city to take advantage of this opportunity.
Okay, is there any other discussion, something in my soul?
Make a motion to pass it.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's a great investment.
Thank you. Um, we will move forward, um, ASAP with.
Let's see if there's any other discussions, City Manager. I didn't know. Commissioner, I mean, any discussion? I don't want to leave anybody out. Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I'm just really excited about this.
I understand. I'm, I'm excited that we're, we're having some traction on the grill because I'm sure we all continue to get these questions about the grill. I know that I was tagged in an entire, um, sort of thing that we're not doing anything and we're not holding. And, and I know they don't really understand how government work, how municipalities work, how, how so many other agencies are involved and everything else that has to happen. Uh, Marco, are you, are you giving us a high five?
No, I'm giving you, I want to say hello. I want to say something.
Oh.
You know, uh, in discussion about this property with the parking garage.
Can I finish, Vice Mayor?
I apologize. You started by saying hi, so I should go.
No, with your hand with the green screen, it kind of looks like you're giving us a high five. I don't know. No, I just think that it's a tremendous, a tremendous investment. Um, and, and I think that it's going to allow us to be able to start moving the process forward. I know we still have to bury the lies at the beach and we have other things that we need to be able to come back and speak of. And including, I know that this is a part of the Parks Master Plan and, and our Beach Master Plan. And so I'm excited for this. So thank you. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, you know, uh, Mayor and Commissioner and Manager, uh, you know, the thing is, in the discussion that we've been having is that, you know, without, uh, being acquired that property from FAU to work with them and, and get this piece of property from DOT to allow us to build a parking garage is, is massive because that's going to allow us to bring more people. Right now, even with the grill not being open, we're shutting the beach down every weekend.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, it's not, it's not even feasible. I mean, I know I want the grill open like everybody else's, but it's not even feasible to have another business there because you can't, you can't get to it, you know, the park. So, I mean, this is like the, the manager said, this is so, such a big start for us to open up and get the grill going to phase two and everything else that, uh, I mean, it's, it's a tremendous luck that we actually got to that point. And I think that the hard work that they put, you guys have put into it before I got back here has made a big difference. And I'm so happy to see that, uh, parking garage, hopefully in, in the near future, get going. And that would really get us on, on track.
Awesome.
And I, is there any way we can just really get this out to the public that we are able to move forward on this plan now? I, I just really, I mean, I think it's so phenomenal. It took a lot of hard work. But this is, if this is the number one question, you know, people, you know, social media all the time. I just think it is such a big deal that we need to make it a big deal so that all Dana Beach knows if they possibly can, so.
I think we need to wait for the RFP to be finalized first.
You're going to get the tip out first.
I understand, but I want to make sure we actually have something in our hands to say, we have submitted an RFP or RP is out there so we can bring something back. And the most exciting news will be when we have an RFP and we'll have things that we can see and really be able to push forward. But I do think when that time comes, we definitely need to push it out there and let them know that we haven't forgotten about them.
Absolutely, Mayor. I, I concur with you and we will put it in social media. But Eric and I were discussing today with Frank about signage on the actual park and by the grill to inform people of the FERDA grant and also that the RFP is out. So even if I have to do a code red, we're going to get the word out. And, and, and you know what? Nothing happens, you know, because of luck. This was a total team effort and a lot of perseverance. And, um, with that said, I also wanted to, to thank this commission because we've had so many calls and visits with residents. Um, like, like the young lady that was here earlier today. You, you all have supported our recommendation for an unprecedented amount of monies and projects for drainage and infrastructure this year. Um, and, and, and that is something that, that is remarkable. And I also want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to not just retain, but to recruit the type of individuals such as Denzer, uh, Linda Gonzalez, I mean Fernando Candido. You know, it, it's nonstop, the calls that we get and the emails that you all send us. But to be able to be so responsive to our, our residents is something that you deserve and, and our, um, our residents deserve. And just, just today, I almost cried, you know, with how impactful this drainage project that you all supported. So thank you for that. Thank you for your time at the strategic planning sessions. Everybody needs to know that you all on a Saturday sacrificed a lot to be able to move the city forward. And we're just one step closer to adopting this, this document that will be the, the compass that will move us forward with, with your priorities. So we're really excited about that. And this budget season is going to be really, really special based on, on your priorities. Um, I've confirmed today, and I know that our executive director for the CRA mentioned it today, but both the signs on, on Griffin and on Dana Beach Boulevard have been relocated. So that's done. Our team is working on a landscaping plan. So those details will, will be completed within the next week. And they look really beautiful and folks are really happy about that. Um, for the first time since I've been going up to Tallahassee since nineteen ninety-eight, um, the book team, Ron Book and, and Rhonda Brown and Kelly Mallett, as I've mentioned to you all, they recommend that we don't go this year. We have a really, really fantastic and solid project up there. Um, and I will be giving you information about some possible Zoom meetings. Um, but we've gotten great traction and great support from Representative Jenny, Representative Geller and Senator Farmer. And I'll be informing you all of that. Um, we opened very successfully, City Hall back up again, March first. The team is doing a fantastic job. The air purifiers are, are, have been installed. Thank you for your support on everything having to do, um, with COVID. Um, we are just moving, um, at full speed and we thank you for your support. And I, I have to thank Chief Pelisar because it was actually his idea to do the team photo for fire rescue and all the women in, in fire rescue. And then I said, well, hey, Chief Marx, why don't we bring the women of law enforcement? And, um, great seamless relationships between all the department directors working together. And thank you for always being there, um, for all these ribbon cutting, strategic planning, um, and all your support. And this concludes my report. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, City Attorney?
Yes, I'd sent, uh, to you, the commissioners, a message about a settlement of a two thousand and fifteen code enforcement case that ended up in a federal, uh, federal court to be settled. Um, the short version is, you saw the memo, but the city received when the woman who owned the property lost the property at a tax deed sale. She had accrued fines of about a quarter million dollars by the time, uh, we learned about it. The county, when she's, uh, she lost the property because she didn't pay her taxes, a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars was paid directly to the city by the county to satisfy our lien. We still had a balance of seventy thousand dollars on the lien. So she'd run up a lien of, of code fines of two hundred and forty thousand dollars. We received the bulk of the money. She had lost her home. Uh, she sought then through a lawyer to get that money back. We said, no, that's because you didn't cure your violations. You let them run out there for a long time, although none of them are really, really bad, but they ran for a long time. The short version is that we cleared a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. We ended up settling the case to repay her of that a hundred and ten thousand, meaning the city nets out sixty-two thousand for it. Reason it's coming before you now, otherwise it wouldn't have come to you, but for the fact that the money we received was received last year in finance. And under the, the books, he can't, the finance people can't, uh, release that money back to the woman to settle the case without getting a motion from you to release back that a hundred and. without getting a motion from you to release back that one hundred and ten thousand because we're in a new fiscal year. That's the short version of it. But she had, this woman had had noticed, she didn't follow up on things. She had almost lost the property a couple of times before that on taxing sales, but finally did lose it. And we we decided this would not look good in front of a federal jury where a woman loses her home and the city keeps all the fine money. So we recommended to settle it for one-ten to get that back to her, and I need a motion to do that to make the finance director happy.
Do we have any comment?
I'll make the motion.
All right, do we have a second? All in favor? Anyone oppose?
Okay, thanks very much. Now that I have something really great to report to you. I got a ruling today or yesterday from a Broward Circuit Judge. This is the case that's been pending for eleven years. It's gone through five circuit judges on the Highline redevelopment. The highlight was redevelopment approval by the City Commission in two thousand and nine. A law firm recruited a number of people to say that citizens in the city opposed it and that they've been following, filed a suit against us for our approval of the renewal and renovation of the Highline. That's been pending, like I said, through five judges. Some had different issues why they couldn't stay. One was sick. The short version is we've ended up with a fifth judge. All our motions were presented to the judge two weeks ago, and he has made a ruling that the people who brought the suit did not have what's called legal standing to bring it. That had been raised with all the other judges. None of the other ones had enough moxie to look at it and say, you're right. He has now dismissed the case, so the city has concluded that case. It will probably be appealed. But Highline is going to be extremely happy. You'll recall manager that we talked to, Arnaldo, the general manager the other day. He was very concerned about this case. It went every way it needs to to help him continue. But it's a big win for the city. It's been a horrible case to deal with. But we tried mediation a couple of times with these people. They would not listen, and now they're done. I know they'll appeal it, but I think we'll be successful on appeal. Yes, Commissioner?
That's what I was going to ask you. Is it dismissed with prejudice or or?
No, well, no, no, it's clearly, you know, they'll go back, they'll seek a rehearing, then they'll go to the Fourth District Court of Appeal, which is the next level. But on standing, as you know, I think once you're killed on that, you're done. So it's a really good ruling for us after a long, long time. Happy to report that. Thank you. That's all I got.
I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
This this case that was settled, this has something to do with there was some conversation that it was being pushed by another casino?
You know what? We we never could prove that, and I I repeatedly asked our defense counsel, go see who is funding this case. Because it certainly wasn't the people who were the so-called citizens. We were never able to, and there's an old English way of trying to find out who's behind the case. The judges would never let us get to that, and we still won't be able to get to that, so we don't have that answer. I suspect things, I don't want to say it, Commissioner, Vice Mayor.
I know, I remember what it was, but the the thing is, of the thousands of dollars that the city caused to defend that. Now, did we get that back?
No, you don't get attorney's fees back. We probably get costs, but you only get attorney's fees that you have a contract that says to do that or a statute that awards them. That won't happen, but we will get our costs.
You can get costs as prevailing party, right? So that's going to go all the way back to the very beginning.
You have to bear in mind that for the most part, it was covered by insurance. Mostly for the first number of years, it was covered by insurance. Then, when we ran out of insurance, I persuaded the people who run the Highline, it was Magic City was running it. They said, you need to pay half of what the city is paying. This is really us defending your lawsuit. They paid for three years, fifty percent of the bills. That stopped about two years ago, and we've been paying the bills. That's why I came to you about a month ago and asked for more money for this case, if you recall, seventy or eighty thousand dollars. That was for that same case. This will now stop the clock on that, and hopefully we'll wrap this up much faster.
Thanks, Tom. Thank you so much. That was it?
That's it.
All right, City Clerk reminders.
Upcoming meeting, Tuesday, March twenty-third at seven PM is your regular City Commission meeting. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. You all have a good night.
Night.
Good night, Commissioners. Good night, everybody.
Hi, everybody.